Good afternoon, welcome to the May eighteenth Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you for joining us. I will call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilwoman Ansari.
Here.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gordado.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastore. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Thank you so much for joining us today. We begin with council information and follow-up requests. Do any council members have updates? Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give an update on a vaccination event that we held in District Seven this past weekend. As I've talked about before, we have some of the zip codes with the smallest percentages, zip codes with smallest percentages of people who have been vaccinated. So we partnered with Adelante Healthcare and the Phoenix Fire Department, held a pop-up event at Cesar Chavez Library on Saturday. And I think it was very successful, really because we spent significant amount of time knocking on doors. Vice Mayor Garcia attended, some of our state representatives in the district, Raquel Turan, Representative Bolding, and Cesar Chavez, knocked on doors, distributed materials in English and Spanish, got some media coverage in Spanish as well, was on the Spanish radio, and also did, sent out about eleven thousand texts. So we were able to vaccinate about six hundred and fifty people, which is really, really exciting. And we will continue to be doing events like this in the coming weeks in Maryville. So just wanted to share that and glad that we got a good number of our residents vaccinated and hope to see those numbers rise in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for getting so many folks vaccinated. Councilwoman Gordado.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just wanted to remind folks that we will be out tomorrow again at the Vaccination Distribution Center again. I just want to take a moment to give a big shout-out to St. Vincent de Paul Catholic School at Fifty First Avenue in Osborne. They have been, this is the second, second time, third time that they are doing this. They vaccinated hundreds of people at this point. I was there last week. I can tell you that folks at St. Vincent de Paul have been doing an amazing job putting the word out. Univision was there last week, and I was able to do an interview to invite people to come on, come on out and, and get their, and get their vaccine. We've had the VIP Coalition that's been out there knocking on doors. Emmanuel and other people from my team here were out there last week, again, knocking on doors. And hopefully, the turnout from tomorrow will, will look, will look amazing. It's one of the things that, as a city, I think we pride ourselves that we are able to meet people where they're at, to be able to meet their needs. And I think this is very exciting that we will continue to put the word out there and to bring the vaccines to our community and looking forward to what tomorrow will look like and get, and from there, being able to get those final numbers. So again, we will be there tomorrow from nine AM to four PM at Fifty First Avenue in Osborne. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate your work in the area. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some comments around heat relief. It's already, I think we've all noticed, it's already hot. My understanding now is that our heat respite won't be decided until we decide the ARPA funds later in the, in, in the summer. I think last year we had five hundred and twenty deaths. We've gotten some calls around what can we do until we, you know, the money from the ARPA or whatever else we're using for heat respite. And so just wondering, I don't know if it's now, but if at, at least at our next policy session, hopefully soon, we can get answers on that. And wondering if there's other ways we can start funding or start thinking if we can't do a large location like we did last year, maybe partnering with other local orgs or churches or other things, just trying to figure that out. So, yeah, just questions around heat relief and I know there's a plan, but if we can make sure we implement soon.
Mayor Gallego, this is the city manager.
Please go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Garcia. Just, I wanted to clarify, the heat relief program is proceeding with a temporary structure now through existing resources. The discussion about the ARPA funds, which actually will happen at the second item, would be for a more permanent structure that would need to be authorized through ARPA funds. But for the immediate term, we have plans for a temporary structure with cooling to be sure that we're, we're not leaving vulnerable people exposed to the heat.
Thank you, Ed. I think just, you know, let's try to figure out if there's other things that we can do. I know, gotten calls in the last couple of days of, of already some first responders having to be out near the zone or in other places because of the heat already, you know, getting to, to a place where it's hurting people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? As we move forward with our budget process, the state is also moving forward with their budget process. I want to recognize the Arizona League of Cities, which is doing work on our city's behalf and others, as well as many other partners, to make sure the state understands the important role that cities will play in our economic recovery and that they have played in prosperity of our state as whole, as a whole. There is concern that the state is considering what could be the largest ever tax cut impacting local governments. We do incredibly important work. There is a proposal for a flat income tax and a resulting decrease in income tax revenue that it's, would be quite detrimental to all cities. Cities currently receive fifteen percent of state income tax revenue, which is split amongst them according to their population in a system known as urban revenue sharing that was approved by Voter Initiative in nineteen seventy-two. That initiative took cities' power to assess income tax away, but guaranteed them this percentage each year. This is not subject to Proposition 105, the voter protection initiative, because of the timing of the passage of those two initiatives, voter protection did not come to us till nineteen ninety-eight. And so urban revenue sharing can be changed or tweaked by the legislature. The proposed cut of one point five billion in income tax could result in two hundred and twenty-five million dollars per year in an ongoing cut to cities, which would be the largest cut in state shared revenue to cities ever. So I think it's important that we, as a city, pay attention to this policy and look at what happens with regressive tax cuts and regressive tax policy and things such as the Kansas Experiment, in which a state imposed a flat tax in twenty twelve that had to be reversed in twenty seventeen because of the fiscal crisis that it created. So I would encourage everyone involved or who cares about local government to pay attention to the state budget. If the state does cut income tax at the rate proposed, cities would need an increased share of roughly twenty percent to be made whole. And this is very important as we discuss today's budget, as well as the ongoing financial future of our city of Phoenix and the very important services that we provide. With that, I will turn to our city manager for budget reports and item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Budget reports is really also item number one, so with your permission, I'll just go right to the first item, which is the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And so thank you for that preface, Mayor, about the risks posed by state funding. And it's a reminder that while we have a very, very good budget situation now, we, it is premised on the idea that all the existing funding sources are left intact. And one of those very important funding sources is the state shared revenue that is constitutionally protected in the state of Arizona. But we are here today to seek your approval of this budget as a council in order to begin the state-required adoption process, which will start on June the second. I have to say, this is the most positively impactful budget for the community and city employees that we have had the opportunity to work on in the past twelve years. And that comes with the resources that you, as a council, preserved through your stewardship of the budget and the coronavirus funds last year. So thank you for that. This budget addresses the city council's priorities and adopted strategies to provide resources for city employees who have sacrificed over the last decade and to add important programs for the community. The budget addresses some important policy goals, just a few. Significant public safety reform, which includes assistance for family members of people affected by police use of force through a new victim advocate added in the Family Advocacy Center. Better and more compassionate crisis response for people experiencing mental and behavioral health crises in a program that represents, I believe, the single largest investment the city's made, at least in my experience, at the city. Faster public record response, more transparent and relevant police data, early intervention in police behaviors, and effectively civilianizing police work in the central booking section. It also addresses climate and heat resiliency with trees and shade and water conservation. Community growth with new parks, adaptive recreation, and the long-awaited Cesar Chavez Community Center at Thirty-Fifth and Baseline. Administrative accountability and equity, homelessness and affordable housing, support for the arts, HIV/AIDS prevention, veterans, historic preservation, youth and education, libraries, and College Depot, and small business development on the West Side. These additions are the result of the mayor and city councils adopted strategies in such diverse areas as climate, affordable housing, homelessness, traumatic incident response, public safety, and water conservation. Adopting a budget sets the path forward. It allows us to attract and retain the essential employees who provide public services the community depends on. It allows us to build community programs, knowing that there's an assured funding strategy for those. And it will provide the spending authority necessary for the spending of American Recovery Plan Act funds that we received this year to provide even more service to the community, and that is the subject of the second council item today. So I want to thank you for your leadership in bringing us to this point. And with that, I will turn it over to our Budget and Research Director, Amber Williamson, for a presentation, a brief presentation, given that we had this presentation two weeks ago. And then we'll turn it back for questions and comments. With that, I want to thank Amber and her staff for the work they've done under the leadership of Assistant City Manager Jeff Barton, but the entire budget team and the entire city staff, who've really worked hard to bring you this remarkable budget. With that, I'll turn it to Amber.
Thank you, Ed, Mayor, council, members of the public who are listening. I'm going to be brief. As Ed explained, I know we have several individuals registered to speak. So I'm going to start with a recap of our general fund budget status. We are required by state statute and city charter to adopt a balanced budget where our resources do equal our expenditures. And we have that for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two on our general fund at just over one point six billion. We do have a structurally balanced budget with a one hundred and fifty-four point eight million dollar surplus that is made up of both ongoing and one-time funds. The proposed budget does propose to decrease the property tax rate to two dollars and twelve cents from two dollars and thirteen cents. However, the levy will continue to increase due to higher property values or net assessed valuations and new construction. Community feedback, I'm going to touch on just what, an update from our community feedback from what I presented back on May fourth. So through our fourteen virtual community budget hearings held from April second through April twentieth, as well as comments that we received on our online budget tool Fund Phoenix, as well as comments directly to the Budget Research Department via email and voicemail, we did receive just over two thousand comments from about fifteen hundred residents. What we heard was calls for reduced funding for the police department, community involvement in the community assistance program expansion, support for new parks in the southwest area of our city, funding for heat mitigation and affordable housing, as well as homelessness, funding for arts and culture and historic preservation, as well as for workforce development, additional streets maintenance, and support for our library program additions. I'm going to go over our general fund proposed additions by category, very high level. More detailed information is included in the city council report that is available online. So to start, employee compensation at a hundred and eighteen point three million. As you know, council, we did reach agreements with our five labor groups. So we are proposing to spend about seventy-six percent of our surplus towards labor increases. Next, public safety reform and responsiveness at twenty point five million. Building community and responding to growth at four point seven million. Administrative accountability at three point one million. Affordable housing and homelessness, two point eight million. Climate change and heat readiness, two point eight million. And finally, COVID response and resiliency at two point six million, for total general fund additions of a hundred and fifty-four point eight million. Now I'll briefly touch on our non-general fund proposed additions. Our non-general funds do include departments such as aviation, water, our solid waste fund, the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund, and our Development Services Fund. It is proposed to add two point two million to the solid waste fund. Due to increased account growth as well as tonnage, they need additional positions. For our Development Services Fund, additional personnel, primarily to do electronic plan reviews, at one million. For the water fund, seven hundred thousand for five positions. The Water Conservation Ad Hoc Committee recommended thirteen projects to be worked on over the next couple of years, and they need additional positions to do that work. And lastly, for the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund, additional positions around four hundred thousand dollars to provide for additional street maintenance. Our total non-general fund additions equal four point three million. So next, we are approaching our legally required budget adoption that occurs in June of every year. After today, we would move to June second for tentative budget adoption, June sixteenth for final budget adoption, and then we end the process on July first with property tax adoption. So today, staff is recommending city council approval of our proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amber, for your presentation and the hard work on this. It's a very exciting day from my perspective. This budget does so much good at a time our community needs it, from investment in behavioral healthcare to sustainability, to supporting our small businesses. We do have a large number of individuals who would like to provide public comment on the budget. So I will turn to our staff to call members of the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Andrea Odegaard-Begay. Andrea, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I serve on our city's Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, and I'm also a resident of Phoenix's District Three. I'd like to begin by thanking the city council for supporting environmental programs and sustainability in Phoenix. And also directly state my support for funding climate change and heat readiness initiatives in particular. This includes the creation of an Office of Heat Response and Mitigation with an Urban Heat Tree and Shade Administrator and budget allocations and invest in the Tree and Shade Master Plan, encompassing the Cool Corridors Program and funding additional city park staff. Earlier in the meeting, the vice mayor noted the need for heat relief as Phoenix is the hottest large city in the United States, and its rapid growth coupled with climate change has contributed to warming, with last summer being Phoenix's hottest on record. So as was noted, heat is responsible for hundreds of deaths each year, and the number of heat-related deaths and illnesses has been steadily increasing. These impacts are also most severely experienced by people in neighborhoods that have historically been disadvantaged. So addressing heat challenges, particularly in vulnerable communities, is timely, urgent, and appropriate response as part of the city's efforts to pursue a more equitable future. Overall, creating an Office of Heat Response and Mitigation will enable leadership and accountability. It's a sensible investment contributing to the reduction of adverse health events, but also has some potential tangible financial favorable responses by having a more favorable perception by city investors, providing for competition for public and private grants to fund research in innovative heat solutions, catalyzing the development of exportable innovations that help people cope with heat, and reducing the strain on social services. So again, thank you, council, for funding environmental, climate change, heat readiness, and diversity and inclusion programs in the city budget.
Our next speaker is Carol Olson. Carol, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Mayor Gallego and city council members, thank you for allowing me to speak in favor of expansion of the CAP program. My name is Carol Olson. I've been practicing psychiatry in the public sector in Phoenix since nineteen ninety-two and have been chair of the Department of Psychiatry at Valleywise Health System for the past seventeen years. Our current system of responding to citizens who are having a behavioral health crisis functions poorly, and it places individuals with the most serious mental illnesses at very high risk when they're in the middle of a crisis and nine-one-one is called. Even police who are specially trained in crisis response may not have the time required to come to a peaceful resolution with a very confused or paranoid individual. It's very common at the hospital I work at for us to receive patients who have spent months in jail on charges arising out of their encounter with police during a behavioral health crisis. Even if they're not arrested, their encounter with police can lead to an unnecessarily escalated situation with potential for injury on both sides. This leads to family members being unwilling to call nine-one-one when their family member with a mental illness is in crisis, and that in turn can lead to tragic outcomes, which again, were unnecessary. I like this proposal because it also involves partnering with a behavioral health agency that can provide a more definitive intervention than simply a response in the midst of the acute crisis. In the long term, I would expect that this will make a more humane community for all of us, and it will match the correct professional with the, with the situation, which in turn will lead to efficiencies, and I think in the long range, may even save money in the city budget. So in summary, I just support this one hundred percent, and I'm very happy to see that the city is attempting to move forward on this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Schwartz. David, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thank you for giving the citizenry a chance to provide input on the budget. As a more than thirty-year resident and a person who's been, who's worked for the city both directly and indirectly, I just want to kind of give you all a bunch of kudos for a great budget process. So as I look back, the city of Phoenix has always done a fantastic job putting a budget together. It starts with the mayor and the council, but also the city manager, Ed Zirker, Assistant City Manager Barton, Budget Director Williamson, and the hundreds probably, or at least dozens of city staff that have a big hand in putting the budget together. And then the citizen input. So I thank you for that. You have the most transparent process, and you all are to be commended. I also have the honor and privilege to work with an organization called Friends of Transit. You'll often hear me talk about the need for more transit funding. But it's more than just that. Friends of Transit looks at transit as part of a balanced transportation plan. Streets also are important in that, and I know you put some money in there for streets. But even as detailed as pedestrian safety, six hundred thousand dollars, we talk a lot about the need for pedestrian safety. Every transit trip begins and ends with the pedestrian, and that the city has the foresight to put that into the budget, I applaud you. And with that, I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Boils. Susan, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today at the meeting. And my name is Susan Boils. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and the Behavioral Health Program Manager at Adelante Healthcare. I am speaking today in support of the public safety reform and responsiveness positions. Providing these additional staff and services to the community assistance program is really crucial to allow the city to better meet the needs of our community, which in regards to behavioral health and mental health are great. The real key to this is really providing the most appropriate care and the most appropriate person at the time of the crisis to help avoid that crisis from escalating. Adelante Healthcare is voicing our full support of this proposed budget and urges you to vote yes. And I appreciate the opportunity again to offer our support in this meeting, and thank you very much for considering the behavioral health needs of our community.
Our next speaker is Linda Brady. Linda, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon. I'm Linda Brady. I work in local government relations, and I'm here representing Salt River Project. SRP supports the city's twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and we look forward to collaborating with city staff on common goals such as climate change and heat readiness and more. I'll save additional comments for the second agenda item. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Timothy Brown. Timothy, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, my name's Tim Brown. I'm adding my support to the two point eight million for climate change and heat readiness initiative. I've been in Phoenix since nineteen seventy-four, forty-seven years, and I've watched the valley grow from three hundred thousand people in Phoenix to over five million people. Back in the seventies, besides an occasional fifty or hundred-year flood, you could actually go out at night and enjoy cooler temperature because the ground was uncovered and heat dissipated naturally into the sky. Today, we have concrete everywhere, and concrete as a material traps thermal heat. And of course, that's what gives us all the ability to scramble eggs on the sidewalk. What I would like to do is tell you that I believe your council and the other cities and councils in the valley, and I was glad to hear the comments from the gal from SRP, should take seriously these attempts to incorporate permanent budget funds for climate-related activities. And heat dissipation gets very close to home for a lot of people who live on the streets. Collectively, the valley is the fifth-largest city in the U.S. It's time for Phoenix and other progressive cities to support real investment in responses to climate change, the development of heat management strategy, and projects like increased use of solar for power, lighting retrofits in buildings, street lighting retrofits, and environmental and equity leadership programs. These must become permanent and critical parts of the city's operations. We need in the future to deal with heat, water, and environment. And I congratulate the city and the budget process that they at least have these actions in the budget, and I hope that they're ratified by the council. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lucia Corral. Lucia, are you on the line?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Lucia. I am from Cisepuela Neighborhood Association, District Seven, zip code eight-five-zero-four-three. The United States provides itself on the fact that we are a first-world country in which everyone has the opportunity to live a life with equity and justice. However, this statement can be true when I have for twelve years watched the elderly that live in my neighborhood walk more than half a mile in the Arizona heat to reach a bus stop to get to a store, clinic, or pharmacy. I've seen mothers and their children having to walk that same distance or sometimes longer in order to get from place to place. And often their kids have special needs or disabilities. I have also seen students that use public transportation to get to their school struggle with these same issues. In fact, I have been that mother having to walk through the hundred-degree weather with my seven-year-old daughter from bus stop to bus stop just to be able to get to a clinic or hospital. from bus stop to bus stop just to be able to get to a clinic or hospital while I was suffering from a kidney disease. It is easy to be oblivious to the struggles of others. And even though the city currently has buses, the stops are extremely far for us, for the elderly or the mother who is struggling to give their kids every opportunity she can, or the father that is trying to provide for his family, or the student trying to get an education. That is why the residents of this community are advocating for a circulator. Not only will having a circulator make our lives better, but it will give the people of this community the dignity that as human beings we deserve. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is PJ Dean. PJ, are you on the line?
Yes, Sam. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Mayor Gallego, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak in regards to the proposed budget. My name is PJ Dean. I'm a District 6 resident and also Secretary of the United Phoenix Firefighters Association. I rise before you today on behalf of the roughly sixteen hundred Phoenix firefighters who passionately protect Phoenix. We would like to voice our profound support for item number one. We would also like to commend our elected leaders and city staff for their efforts in creating a budget that provides for such a profound investment into our community. For the first time in a long time, it feels like we're no longer planning fiscal catch-up and can now take effective measures towards our challenges. Of these challenges, crisis management, mental health, substance abuse, and homelessness stand out as major issues first responders deal with on a daily basis. Since 1995, the Phoenix Fire Department's Community Assistance Program has given us more resources and expertise to manage these issues and better serve our residents. The proposed budget gives the CAP the funding necessary to reach its long-awaited potential. It's deeply concerning this program could now be put into an uncertain future by an anonymous entity that emerged only a few months ago. They have funding from an out-of-state PAC and no identifiable leadership. In their own words, NOCAP and their supporters contend that the fire department cannot be trusted to run the CAP, despite it being under our administration for over twenty-five years. The motive of NOCAP appears to be driven mostly by desire to defund the police. Whereas it's certainly their prerogative to have that goal, this is not what should drive the development and management of a vital community program. We also feel it's worth mentioning that no one wanted to take this program from us back when it was operated with just minimal grant funding and passionate volunteers. The notion that firefighters cannot be trusted due to our alignment with the police is ridiculous. Since 1886, our department has been the provider of one of our most vital services. To this day, our mission and values have always delivered on and maintained the trust our community puts in us. Those who contend our culture does not provide for compassion and empathy clearly don't know our culture. In closing, we'd like to stress how crucial it is for the CAP's success to remain in trusted hands. Keeping the CAP-based program allows for units to work seamlessly with the person who encountered these issues the most. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sunshine Dean. Sunshine, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is Sunshine Dean. I am the Vice President of Business Development at Spectrum Healthcare Group. We are a fully structurally integrated behavioral and physical health provider. Spectrum is here today in full support of allocating funding to mental health initiatives, especially mobile crisis and the budget. The current providers in Maricopa County and the insurance payer Mercy Care are doing great work in mobile crisis delivery. That said, there is no shortage of need as it pertains to mental health crisis. As the council knows, we've seen an increase in mental health needs over the last year, and we anticipate that that will continue. Spectrum Healthcare has a long history of providing mobile crisis support in Yabapai County, with more on the horizon in Maricopa. We are intimately aware of the profound impact this service can have on a community. This impact spans from individual positive outcomes to decreased costs to individuals, jails, hospitals, and our police force. We believe that funding for mobile crisis response should not be shouldered by our Medicaid system alone, but should rather be an investment made by our communities. Much like other first responder agencies, mobile crisis teams rapidly mobilize on scene to deliver critical assessment and intervention for our community. I would like to thank the mayor and city for your consideration on this budget item and for your incredible forward-thinking in this arena. This has the ability to impact many lives. Thank you for your time today.
Our next speaker is Ann Ender. Ann, are you on the line?
I'm here. Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor Garcia, and council members, Ann Ender. I'm a neighborhood leader and the president of Operation Blue Ribbon. Thank you for listening to my comments supporting the comprehensive budget before you. I'm grateful for this public process. This budget supports the public's request to, by allocating money toward the resources necessary to meet needs in their communities. We heard many comments expressing the need for more police officers because residents didn't feel safe in their neighborhoods. This is one reason the allocation for public safety is critical. Today, Phoenix PD has approximately 3,000 active sworn officers. Of those officers, over 30% are eligible to retire next year, and our need for 911 communication operators is desperate. We need them to adequately respond to over 6,000 calls per day. Addressing crime in our neighborhoods is a collective effort of community leaders, lockwatches, residents, and the Phoenix Police Department. Countless volunteer hours participating in quarterly, monthly, and sometimes weekly meetings with our precinct leadership, net squads, and CAOs seeking solutions for such things as the crime that has been occurring at the Santa Fe Springs apartment complex. I'm happy to report that working with the Net Squad, those crimes have been reducing daily. The monthly Neighborhood Preservation Task Force meetings that began back in 2018 to address the 24/7 methadone clinic that had negative impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, resulting in legislation that regulates clinics, and it also created a very successful community outreach program. The 27th Avenue to-do list and good neighborhood agreements that were created by the Violence Impact Project to suppress crime along the 27th Avenue corridor. And there's so many more, all with the goal of safe communities. Imagine the possibilities of public safety, with public safety departments that are adequately staffed. Thank you so much for this budget. It does accomplish that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick Graham. Patrick, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, members of the council. Thank you for your service. I'm Pat Graham, interim Director of Arizona Thrives and former Director of the Nature Conservancy in Arizona. While I'm here on behalf of the Nature Conservancy, I did want to thank the council for joining the statewide Arizona Thrives Alliance to advance clean air and clean energy. We support inclusion in the 2021 Sea of Phoenix trial budget, funding to create the Office of Heat Response and Mitigation, to support the Climate Action Plan, to implement the Tree and Shade Program, and for creating cool corridors. As you know, extreme heat and poor quality impact the health, safety, and quality of life of all Phoenicians. However, it disproportionately affects underserved communities, which are the least able to adapt, as you've already heard. So implementing your climate action plan is important, and it's urgent. And the good news is, we know much of what it takes to get that done. You will also be considering allocation of ARP funds today, and they present a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make transformational investment. Considering where Phoenix is with greenhouse gas emissions and what needs to be accomplished in this decade, it'll take an all-in effort as soon as possible. And while the FY2122 budget is a good start, transformational investments are needed to reach these goals, and that could include energy efficiency, electric vehicles and charging infrastructure, renewable energy and solar batteries, microgrids, recycling and composting, and green infrastructure. So we encourage Phoenix to leverage the ARP funds to make that happen. Your actions and leadership will have a ripple effect across the valley, the state, the region. We thank you, City Council members and Mayor Gallego, for having the courage to lead and to innovate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leonard Gross. Leonard, are you on the line?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, thanks for having me, Mayor Gallego and the council. An honor to be here. My name is Lenny Gross. I was formerly an Americor Vista in the Neighborhood Services Department. I worked on the Love Your Block project. I worked with Mary Kay. We had good experiences then. I'm here to speak in support right now for the 2021-2022 trial budget, which includes a proposed spending of $2.8 million to address climate change and heat readiness. Specifically, I wanted to advocate for the half a million dollars, $500,000, to create an Office of Heat Response Mitigation. Just speaking from my personal experience as a Phoenician and a former city employee, I think it's safe to say a lot of us live in a bubble, both physically and mentally, because we can travel in our air-conditioned cars from our air-conditioned homes to our air-conditioned offices where we do our work during 110-degree triple-digit heat, only to return home in our air-conditioned cars to our air-conditioned home on a regular basis. That is not the case for a volume of people, an upsettingly large volume of people who, you know, live in Phoenix and don't enjoy that luxury of air conditioning. So sort of with that as our backdrop, and knowing that programs like Trees, and you know, some of the other proposals that are in here for funding streets, you know, one and a half million dollars for the Streets Department, I think it's money well-spent right now. And that's all I'd like to say. Thanks for hearing me out, and I hope you pass this budget. Thanks.
Our next speaker is John Hamby. John, are you on the line? John is not on the line. Our next speaker is Mike Huckins. Mike, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Mike Huckins with the Greater Phoenix Chamber, here today in support of the revised FY22 city-proposed budget. I'd like to thank the city manager's office, especially Ed, Jeff, and Amber for their work on the budget and for setting up the virtual community involvement meetings that were set up over the past number of weeks. After a fiscally prudent budget was adopted last year in light of the unknowns due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the business community is pleased to once again see a structurally balanced budget being proposed today that invests in critical areas of need. It's my note goal not to get too political on the testimony today, but obviously, police funding has been a topic of considerable discussion over the last year. I want to make it clear that the business community is glad to see additional resources being put into the police department. As an adequately funded police department, it's crucial to ensuring a safe city for businesses to operate in. We also understand additional items needed to be addressed in light of recent events, and we are hopeful that other funding included will help public safety respond in incidents where individuals are in need of mental health services. We also glad to see resources being put into affordable housing and hope to see that light item increased in future years as revenues allow. Since time is limited, Mayor, I won't go into all the other areas, but as my time at the legislature working on budgets taught me, if everybody gets something and everybody hates something in the budget, it's usually a good one. But again, we are supportive of the overall revised budget, and thank you, Mayor and council, for your time and consideration today.
Our next speaker is Michelle Jamison. Michelle, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Michelle Jamison, and I'm the Executive Director of US Feds in Phoenix. I am calling in to support Mayor Gallego's Mental Health Initiative for the city of Phoenix. It is important to have the appropriate mental health and behavioral health resources to respond to that mental health crisis. This will help prevent criminalizing behavioral health issues while freeing up time for the first responders to address safety emergencies. So I would like to thank Mayor Gallego and the city council for prioritizing mental health. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Kelly. Michael, are you on the line?
I also support the entire budget. In the four decades that I've lived in Phoenix, this is the most clear and concise budget ever presented. Specifically, I support College Depot at Phoenix Public Library that is seeking a program to expand for two full-time positions. Here's a perfect example of why this expansion should be approved. Bianca Ramirez came to College Depot as a high school student with $0 saved for her college. Her College Depot advisor helped her complete her free application for federal student aid or FAFSA. This application unlocked the opportunity for Bianca to receive the Obama Scholarship at Arizona State University. It took her 20 minutes to complete the FAFSA, and those 20 minutes changed her life. This month, Bianca graduated from ASU 100% debt-free. I'm also in support of the crisis response to expand the City of Phoenix Community Assistance Program, or CAP. To bridge this gap and to improve service delivery to individuals contacting 911 experiencing behavioral mental health issues or in need of emergency crisis response, the city has proposed adding resources to CAP. The mayor and city council and residents have expressed the need for more accountability, responsiveness, transparency, and trust for public safety programs. Therefore, I encourage you to support these budget items and others towards public safety reform and responsiveness, and also community education. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Martinez III. David, are you on the line? David is not on the line. Our next speaker is Summer Mattingly. Summer, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Hi, I'm Summer Mattingly. The budget was brought to my attention, and I appreciate being able to call in and voice my support for the Community Assistance Program that Phoenix Fire implemented years ago. It is crucial that this program has adequate funding, especially with our city growing large. It ensures that our first responders, who often are the first ones on-site, have proper resources that they can give community members who are suffering from tragedy and also mental health crises. I have myself, as a nurse practitioner and Arizona native, used them in numerous situations where, you know, a follow-up call and calling them and checking in on a patient led to me contacting the crisis response team and getting them adequate care, even though they had family support. I do find that the current system that was implemented by Phoenix Fire years ago does work, and it will work more efficiently now that they do have funding. So I just wanted to voice my support with that program, and I appreciate your consideration and attention of this area need.
Our next speaker is Sandy Novelli. Sandy, are you on the line?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, I had about a two-and-a-half-minute thing, so I'm gonna read real fast to get it at two minutes. I'm a retired Phoenix firefighter. Since the subject is the CAP program, I like to tell you many experiences, but due to time, I'll only mention the very first one call that I was experienced with them many years ago. Possibly, it might have been one of your neighbors. Soon after the program started, we went on a call on the west side where a middle-aged woman opened the door crying hysterically. Sadly, we see that too much, pretty much daily, but this was different. You could see that she was having a mental and physical breakdown. She had school-aged children, but also her husband's elderly mom with Alzheimer's was living with them. The elderly woman had just got out of the house. She's recently been getting combative, and she had gone down the street. The husband was working long hours supporting his family and his mom's medical needs. The Phoenix police were there also. They quickly, they got her within just a few minutes. She had been a couple blocks away by that time. They were out searching for her mother, brought her home safely. The younger woman said she hardly sleeps anymore, and that was pretty obvious to us. She could hardly stand. Mayor, council members, and any other Phoenix family that are listening, this is what firefighters call the gray area. There was no crime. There was no physical, medical issue. There was no fire. There was nothing more the police or fire could do for this poor, mentally broken, totally exhausted woman or her family. The kind of gray area situation been going on in the fire service forever, and still does to pretty much most of the country, thank God, no longer here in Phoenix. Luckily, one of our crew members remembered the new CAP program that Chief Brunsenian started, and we called the alarm room and was told that they were helping a family on the south side who had just lost a father to a heart attack. Side who had just lost a father to a heart attack, but they should be there soon. They got there in about 45 minutes. It was our first cruise, our cruise's first experience with CAP, and not to sound corny, but it was like watching a professional angel that worked. They first hugged the woman, calmed her. They calmed down the mother-in-law, who was also hysterical. And also, they began, then they started making phone calls to different agencies. We stood there in awe of what they were doing. We heard another call dispatching our area, so we went back to the service. What they ended up doing for this lady was they found a free adult care service, adult care center for a few hours a day for the elderly lady, so her daughter-in-law could get some rest and also do what needed to be done for her children. The CAP crew that day absolutely saved the woman and her family. Just to let you know, I'll cut it short.
Our next speaker is David Obergefell. David, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and esteemed council members. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, a doctoral candidate, and a resident of our city. I serve as the Senior Director for Crisis Services with Terrors Health and have served as part of our crisis response system of care over the past 20 years. I am pleased to address you again today to support adopting the budget initiative to expand resources and collaboration for the Community Assistance and Advocacy Program. Crisis intervention and community support services delivered from a proactive, responsive, and community-engaged, trust-building perspective is prevention. As has been stated in previous meetings with the council, mental health issues, suicidality, and substance use are critical wellness concerns. Individuals who need the most help often struggle with navigating the ways to access the care they need. For those who need the lifelines of both emergency response and ongoing care, we see the value of establishing trust, relationship building, and making quality connections. These connections are made more accessible by offering the most appropriate response, accounting for and addressing social determinants of health, and delivering well-targeted services at the right time. Research supports that utilization of service is more substantial when the critical aspect of building trust through empathetic response and relationships is made a priority, a person-centered design. Delivering services as part of and in collaboration with the community advocacy team, operating as an alternative to law enforcement response comprised of certified peer support, qualified crisis intervention, and case management specialists with a depth of knowledge and expert skill in utilizing the service landscape, afford all of us in the city a model of honoring an individual's experience, offering choice and autonomy, focusing on whole-person needs, and fulfilling the ideal of receiving immediate community-based quality care. Focusing our efforts in addressing system integration associated with behavioral health emergencies and understanding individual needs beyond a stop-cap response is how we work to knock down barriers, creating health and wellness together. We are proud to be a longstanding partner with the City of Phoenix in sustaining healthy and thriving communities. Terrors Health fully supports this initiative. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Phil Pangrazio. Phil, are you on the line? Phil is not on the line. Our next speaker is Michael Peal. Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Michael Peal, and I am the statewide sustainability director for Local First Arizona. We are in strong support of the $2.8 million in funding for climate change and heat readiness initiatives. Our organization is committed to and has been making progress toward climate change and heat readiness goals through our Scale Up Project Planning Program, Arizona Green Business Certification Program, educational campaigns, and partnerships to increase impact on measurable climate goals. Working together, we can make our communities more equitable, places to live and work, improve the air we breathe, reduce the impact of heat, increase water security, protect Arizona's natural beauty, and sustain agriculture and energy independence. Our organization is actively collaborating with cities across the state, including Phoenix, Tempe, and Mesa, supporting the 2030 District Challenge for Planning, and Environmental Defense Fund nationally as partners, and recently joined the Arizona Thrives Alliance. Climate change is having an undeniable impact on our fragile desert ecosystems. These environmental changes affect Arizona businesses and residents as utility costs rise with extreme heat and increasing temperatures. The rising urban heat-island effect affects us all and under-resourced communities the most. We support the inclusion of the items to provide important and critical heat mitigation and other benefits that are greatly needed here in Arizona and in Phoenix. We appreciate the significant climate action leadership by the City of Phoenix. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Poon. Jenny, are you on the line?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, Mayor and council members. This is Jenny Poon, founder of Kahoots, and over the past three months, we've been, or actually, four, five months, we've been helping the City of Phoenix with a program called Phoenix Biz Connect. It's under our Hub platform, and the Hub is a free one-stop resource for small businesses. So this is partly this item and partly item number two, but I'll go over that quickly. Hub is now in existence. We've been running for about three months, and we have almost 500 businesses on this platform. It's a one-stop central space for any business to go find the resources that they need that's available in our city. That includes technical assistance from community partners. That includes talking directly to city economic developers that can help them with different things, navigating a library of resources that are available, applying for new grants that are available, and being notified. So there's 500-some businesses, Phoenix businesses, on this platform, many of which are minority-owned businesses. 50% are women-owned businesses, and we've been running this for three months and are up for renewal. So my big ask here is, we've seen a lot of success. We've been tracking those metrics. We've seen 65% of the businesses on this platform grow in the first two, three months of being on this platform. That's finding resources, creating jobs, improving their revenues, lowering expenses through this pandemic. It's only been three months. And so I think really, my big ask here is to really double down and invest further in this technology-driven approach to help businesses beyond just the hours that the city is available, to expand the technical assistance dollars that are associated with this. We have 20-plus community partners. That's Local First, our chambers, our minority-owned or minority business centers. All of these partners are in support. So this goes for item one and item two. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Sneed. Jason, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Jason Sneed. I just wanted to support this budget due to, specifically in regards to public health, the public health initiative, with regards to mental health, the mental health initiative. I work for the Arizona Developmental Disabilities Planning Council, and I'm also on the Marriage Commission for Disability Issues. However, it's important to note that I am representing myself as a private citizen. Back in 2016, the Morrison Institute came out with a report in regards to the mental health and crisis response. In that report, it detailed a bunch of things that we could do to improve our system. With the money in this budget, we could do that, and we could definitely improve the system. So once again, I'm just here to support the budget, this proposed budget, and thanks again.
Our next speaker is John Swaggart. John, are you on the line? John is not on the line. Our next speaker is Ginger Sykes Torres. Ginger, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager. I am dedicated to helping our city become a national leader in environmental sustainability. I serve on our city's Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission and chair the Urban Heat Island Tree and Shade Subcommittee. I am also leading Valley Leadership's Environmental Sustainability Tree Cover and Shade Impact Maker Group. I am commenting in support of and commend you for including $2.8 million in funding for climate change and heat readiness initiatives in the 2021-22 proposed budget. I congratulate you for the impressive budget for environmental initiatives, programs, and resilient strategies. Investment in our city's climate and resilience is critical to our long-term sustainability and success. Rising temperatures are a threat to more and more residents of our city each year, and it is important that the needs of all residents are considered when funding heat initiatives and programs. It is critical for these investments to be prioritized in our city's most heat-vulnerable communities to protect public health, in particular, the elderly, children, and anyone without the means to find shelter from the heat during our extreme heat events. We must make sure that those disproportionately affected and most at risk of heat-related illness are protected. The investments in climate change and heat readiness initiatives in the trial budget, especially the Office of Heat Mitigation and Response, and the Tree and Shade Investments and the Tree and Shade Master Plan, Cool Corridors Program and Climate Action Plan, Office of Diversity and Equity and Inclusion, and the 2025 Phoenix Food Action Plan will benefit our public health and economy and ensure our city's national reputation as an environmental leader. This is beneficial for the city's growth and prosperity. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Our next speaker is Javier Torres. Javier, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. And before I start, I want to say thank you to the mayor, the city council, all of the different commissions and boards that were instrumental in preparing this budget. I'm here to speak in favor of the budget, particularly in favor of all of the environmental and climate change and tree and shade-related portions of the budget. I'm a dad. I live in the Madison neighborhood, and we're lucky enough to have a lot of trees in our area. I've seen the benefits of having a lot of trees around, just in terms of being able to play outside with the kids, even when it's hot outside. The difference between being outside in the sun and being outside in the shade is like night and day. Well, I guess not literally night and day, but close to night and day. And I would love for the whole city to have that benefit of having lots of shade cover. And I think that having trees and shade be kind of like a designated and kind of defined part of the budget will help bring attention to the issue of planting more trees in the city. It'll have knock-on effects. So even though, even aside from the trees that the city itself will plant through the budget, I think having that kind of publicized effort will encourage other people just to plant more trees on their own. So yes, thank you again, Mayor, City Council, all the different commissions and boards that were involved in this, and thank you for the chance to speak. Goodbye.
Our next speaker is Craig Trippkin. Craig, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Mayor, council, and staff, first, I want to thank you for all your effort in creating a great budget. I want to speak about homelessness very briefly. What we've learned in COVID and some of the funding we've got is to build on the experiences, try new things and to build on them. We've tried new things. We've learned new things, and we've learned new things that are successful. Among other things, we've learned that nimble programs, changing programs, trying what works, and trying new things is very important. Different tactics and programs work differently in different areas. You've got a lot of emphasis on Hatcher and the area around the Human Services Campus. The tactics that we use there will not necessarily be the tactics that we use elsewhere. And I guess I close by saying, please, keep trying. Regarding homelessness, keep trying, trying, trying. We are learning new things all the time. Many of the prevailing orthodoxies that we were saluting five years ago are not things that we necessarily salute today, and the next five years will show us the same thing. So we can address homelessness successfully, and I think it's very important that we continue to try new things. And to do that, again, thank you, staff. Thank you, council.
Our next speaker is Ashley Zaffaranlu. Ashley, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Ashley Zaffaranlu, and I am a District Two resident, and it's an honor to appear before the council today to speak in support of the $2.8 million for the Office of Heat Response Mitigation and other heat readiness programs. As a previous City of Phoenix employee myself, who was once dedicated to working on several heat projects across various city departments in partnership with Arizona State University, I can tell you confidently that funding these heat positions and programs is a necessary and critical step towards protecting the long-term viability of Phoenix as heat continues to threaten the well-being of our marginalized communities, our infrastructure, and the economy. As we all know, Phoenix is already known for its heat and high temperatures amongst locals and tourists alike, and it's the truth. But we also know that the truth is, heat can be mitigated if the proper measures are taken. And I believe this council is being presented with an enormous opportunity to face this growing hazard by investing in innovative and strategic heat solutions. So when people talk about Phoenix in the future, they talk about how the city took the necessary measures to ensure the people, economy, and the environment could thrive for our future generations. So in summary, heat is undeniably an equity issue, and I would like to thank the council for including heat readiness in this budget, and I especially like to thank Mayor Gallego for her leadership on this issue. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Blanca Abarka. Blanca, are you on the line?
Blanca se encuentra en la línea. Okay, she's gonna be back in a few minutes.
We will proceed with the next speaker. Our next speaker is Zulma Aguirre. Zulma, are you on the line?
Se desconectó. Se desconectó.
Mayor and council, one moment while we're making sure we have a connection. Take a quick pause. We're still holding for a connection. One moment.
City manager, could we try another speaker and then come back?
Yes. David's gonna go to the next speaker. David, who's next?
Our next speaker is Maria Arbalo. Maria, are you on the line?
En la línea? No.
Maria is not on the line.
Blanca Abarka is.
Blanca Abarka is on the line.
We will go back to Blanca Abarka.
Okay, vamos a regresar de nuevo con Blanca Abarka. Blanca, le habla al intérprete, si por favor, después de cada ciertas oraciones puede ser una breve pausa para interpretar lo mejor posible, por favor. Adelante. Adelante, Blanca. that is going to be expanded underneath the Phoenix Fire Department. The biggest reason for this is that we cannot have any kind of crisis assistance program that is in tandem with the police, in tandem with fire, or ran by either one of these departments as the community does not trust us. I did hear a first responder or a supporter of first responders earlier talking about how NOCAP is an anonymous entity that has a pack from outside places. This is just gaslighting. It's stroking fear, and above all, it's a lie. NOCAP is a coalition and an organization of people from Arizona, people all over the Phoenix metro area, who are trying to better this program and who are demanding that this be separate from police and fire. It cannot be restored the way that it is. The way that these people are talking about how the crisis assistance program has worked or has helped are just picking little scenarios to make it sound positive, and they're saying that this has been a program that's been around since the 80s or the 90s. If that was the case, then why have we had so many instances of police violence in Phoenix with the unsheltered community or with the community that has mental illnesses? This doesn't make sense. If they're handling it, we wouldn't have these situations where people are being arrested only because they are having a mental crisis. We're seeing and hearing from these people that are saying that they're part of organizations and they're part of programs that help out and that they've seen how these situations with the police get out of hand. Well, where was the cap program to intervene? If it was working, there would have been intervention. If it was working, there wouldn't be a need to reform or to give it all of this budget. We need something new. The community does not want a cap program underneath the Fire Department. We need it separate, independent, and community-oriented. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luke Black. Luke, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please proceed.
Perfect. Good afternoon, members of council. I am opposed to this budget as it is written. As you noted in your presentation, community members spoke out quite adamantly. Over 60% of the comments were against increasing funding to this police department. Yet we continue to have a budget brought to you by the city manager's office that does exactly that. It increases funding for the most violent department in the country for two of the last three years. We have continued to watch since 2018 as the city manager's office has dumped tens of millions of dollars into vacancies that this department has not been able to fill. The department continues to get that money, which is taxpayer money, and we have no idea what they do with it. It basically just becomes a slush fund for them and all of their little projects at the cost of taxpayers. This budget asks to hire 75 new civilian positions. Those positions need to come specifically from the vacant positions that we are already funding, which we continue to not get service from. It is ridiculous to continue to expand the police budget when we are already not able to fill the vacancies that we have with more police officers with civilian positions. I would ask council to vote, to propose a motion and to vote to take those 75 positions from the already 176 vacancies that are available that we have not been able to fill. Secondly, I would ask this council to move to make sure that no COVID money, especially ARPA money, goes to support police funding. That money specifically came to the community to support the recovery from COVID. We need to not give that money to the Phoenix Police Department. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kat Blue. Kat, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Kat Blue from District Four. Many of you know my name by now due to my campaign seeking justice for baby Luna. I'm here to remind you all, a very large portion of the community rejects this proposed budget. Many are unaware or unable to participate in this forum. In fact, the clerk tweeted about tomorrow's meeting, but not today's. The proposed budget expands the PD, spitting in the faces of Black, Indigenous, and people of color and their supporters. It doesn't adequately reflect our demands for public safety reform. It does not go far enough to divest from your corrupt and violent law enforcement agency. It falls far short of our calls to transfer funding from police to community. When we call on police, we risk lives. I made this mistake recently, and my infant grandbaby was tased in her father's arms, a man in crisis who simply needed help. I insist you order the immediate release of all footage related to this egregious incident of police violence, and you defund your notoriously bad policing agency. I call 911 because I didn't know who else to call, and they sent terrorists, officers who use violence when that is the opposite of what is needed. As others mentioned, this is not an appropriate response to a mental health crisis or nearly any other crisis. Your mental health initiative must be materialized immediately and be even more exclusive of law enforcement. Community assistance programs should include EMTs and paramedics, and we do support firefighters, but their first responders must be separated entirely from law enforcement, cannot work in tandem with them. The cap program currently in place does not work. Where was CAP in a panic crisis and his baby were assaulted by your police? We call on you to fully fund and develop alternative crisis response systems now. #JusticeForBabyLuna. Find us and fight with us.
Our next speaker is Eric Brickley. Eric, are you on the line? Eric is not on the line. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Carpenter. Elizabeth, are you on the line? Elizabeth is not on the line. Our next speaker is Alejandra Cervantes. Alejandra, are you on the line? Alejandra is not on the line. Our next speaker is Rebecca Dennis. Rebecca, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, please proceed.
Hello?
Hello, Rebecca, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Oh, wait, sorry, sorry. Can we turn this down? Sorry, give me one second. Okay, thank you. Once again, I'm here speaking to oppose this budget as it stands, as it does not reflect the community's needs and asks. This budget feels like you threw hungry dogs a bone when what they needed was to be cared for, not distracted with the bare minimum. Over 60% of people who participated asked for a budget changes specific to the police department, and yet this budget does not reflect that. In this budget, you are currently trying to expand the police department by adding 75 new positions while there are 176 vacancies, and over the last several years, those positions have not been filled. But you want to spend an additional $3.2 million of taxpayer dollars and expend a deadly department that has yet to see consequences for its corruption, white supremacy, and violence. The fiscally responsible and rational thing to do would be to convert all 75 positions you want to add from the 176 vacant ones, especially since '22 have already been converted. In the past, the police department has been allowed to use the surplus from these unused vacant positions at their discretion. No other department would be allowed the freedom to spend a surplus of millions of dollars, how they please, without directly reporting in a public record how those funds are spent. One example of where this $3.2 million could be reinvested is in public transportation and be available as stipends so that folks in our community can have free transportation. We cannot let a budget pass that expands the police department. It's tiring that many people continue to show up to let this council and our city managers know how disappointing it is. Any type of innovative program that has been added to this budget is directly because of the community who showed up during the budget hearing meetings and voiced what they knew their communities needed. However, it could be more positively impactful if you really listen to the community members who overwhelmingly ask for money to be divested from the police budget and use those funds to further expand these new programs and community resources. Sometimes I feel like you guys are literally useless, like you purposely ignore us, like the decisions you make are made out of spite and petty, and our lives are not a game. I am a real person. The people that live in my community are real people. Do.
Our next speaker is Zulma Aguirre. Zulma, are you on the line?
Hello, Zulma, se encuentra en la línea. Zulma Aguirre? Zulma Aguirre, me escucha? Hello, Zulma?
Zulma is not on the line. Our next speaker.
Ahora sí le escucho, Zulma. Me escucha? Soy el intérprete. Hello?
Hola, nos encontramos acá Abarca.
Okay, so they're telling me that Blanca Abarca is here and ready to speak. Would it be okay to circle back to her at this time?
Yes, Blanca, please proceed.
Sí, adelante, Blanca, puede proceder. Good afternoon. My name is Blanca Abarca. I've been a resident of my neighborhood for over 20 years, and I have never seen there be any kind of maintenance to the sidewalks or put in bumps, speed bumps, or any maintenance to the streets for that matter, or even fix the light bulbs in our streets. It is very easy to ignore the needs of others, and I believe that the community's needs should not be ignored. When there is an investment in the community, the community will change and flourish. We should put all of our strength in making changes in our communities, especially adding additional services that will strengthen our communities. How is it possible that they are proposing 75 new positions of the police when there's -- when there's -- when they're being so -- when they're having all these -- when we're having all these issues with the police? Why are they trying to give more money to the police when there is more needs in my community? I think the most logical and rational thing to do is to fulfill the current 175 vacant positions versus adding an additional 75 and taking those monies from the taxpayers to put to work for the community needs. And I believe that the money, the council should take care of that money that the taxpayers have -- that the taxpayers are paying, is to take that money to put to work for the needs of the community instead. The police is out of control, and it's not -- and it doesn't make sense to continue to support them financially. Excuse me, the four-minute time limit is up. Thank you so much. They need to support us in this movement, and because our children's futures are at stake.
Good afternoon, we are calling the next speaker. The next speaker is Zulma Aguirre, please. Zulma, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Zulma. Se encuentra en la línea? Zulma, se encuentra en la línea?
No.
Zulma is not on the line. So our next speaker is Maria Arbaio. Maria, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es María Arbaio.
No.
María no se encuentra en la línea?
Maria is not on the line. Our next speaker is María Armenda. María, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es María Armenda. Se encuentra?
No, la próxima persona que está aquí es Martha.
The next person that is here is Martha Avendano. Okay, our next speaker is Martha Avendano. Please proceed.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Martha Avendano. Puede proceder.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon, hello.
En esta ocasión. Adelante, Martha. Nada más después de ciertas oraciones haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Okay. En esta ocasión venimos de vuelta como antes. Dijimos que no queremos los nuevos 75 puestos para la policía. Estamos exigiendo que nuestro dinero sea invertido para la comunidad.
And we are here once again to demand that not to open those 75 positions to the police department, and instead, we demand that those monies are invested in our community.
Estamos exigiendo que el transporte público sea gratuito para todas las personas que lo podemos usar. También exigimos un centro de rehabilitación para los jóvenes en el oeste de Phoenix.
We are also demanding that we have free transportation, public transportation for everyone, and also that they add more rehab centers throughout Phoenix. actually to take that money to put to work for the needs of the community instead. The police is out of control, and it's not, eh, and it doesn't make sense to continue to support them financially. Excuse me, um, the four, the four-minute time limit is up. Thank you so much. They need to support us in this movement, and, and because our children's futures are-
Good afternoon, we are calling the next speaker. The next speaker is Zulma Aguirre, please. Zulma, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Zulma. Se encuentra en la línea? Zulma, se encuentra en la línea?
No.
Zulma is not on the line.
Zulma is not on the line, so our next speaker is Maria Arbaio. Maria, are you on the line?
No.
Maria, no se encuentra en la línea?
Maria is not on the line. Our next speaker is Maria Armenda. Maria, are you on the line?
No, la próxima persona que está aquí es Martha.
The next person that is here is, uh, Martha. Avendano. Avendaño.
Okay, our next speaker is Martha Avendano. Please proceed.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Martha Avendaño. Puede proceder.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon, hello.
Adelante, Martha. Nada más después de ciertas oraciones, haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Okay. En esta ocasión, está, venimos de vuelta como antes. Exigir que no queremos los nuevos 75 puestos para la policía. Estamos exigiendo que nuestro dinero sea invertido para la comunidad.
And we are here once again to demand that, uh, not to offer those, open those 75 positions, um, to the police department, and instead, we demand that those monies are invested in our community.
Estamos exigiendo que el transporte público sea gratuito para todas las personas que lo podemos usar. También exigimos un centro de rehabilitación para los jóvenes en el Oeste de Phoenix.
Um, we are also demanding that we have free transportation, public transportation for everyone, and also that they add more rehab centers, um, throughout, uh, Phoenix.
No queremos que nos quiten más nuestro dinero que viene de la comunidad. Queremos que ese dinero de la comunidad, que se lo quieren a los policías, sea invertido en nuestros propios beneficios. Ya que estamos necesitando el centro de rehabilitación para los jóvenes, como yo tengo jóvenes, hijos jóvenes, queremos que, que ellos sean atendidos por un centro de rehabilitación.
We no longer want that money to be invested in the police, but instead be used for the benefit of the community. We still need more, uh, rehab centers for our youth. Um, I have children too that need help, and that's what we need the money to be invested in. Adelante, Martha. Se, se dé el tiempo a la siguiente persona, Martha?
Our next speaker is Tiffany Ávila. Tiffany, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Tiffany Ávila. Se encuentra en la línea?
Our next speaker is Ramon Buella. Ramon, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Ramon Buella. Ramon Buella?
We do not have Ramon, so our next speaker is Margarita Becerra. Margarita, are you on the line?
Uh, no tenemos a Ramon, pero, uh, ahora la siguiente oradora es Margarita Becerra. Se encuentra en la línea? Margarita Becerra?
We do not have Margarita Becerra. So our next speaker is Brenda Bustamante. Brenda, are you on the line?
No tenemos a Margarita Becerra, pero la siguiente oradora es Brenda Bustamante. Se encuentra Brenda?
Sí, buenas tardes.
Uh, yes, good afternoon.
Brenda, please proceed.
Sí, muy bien.
Sí, ahora sí le escucho, Brenda. Le habla, le interprete, si por favor puedo hacer una breve pausa después de cada, um, ciertas dos oraciones para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Brenda Bustamante. Pertenezco a City Council Neighborhood Association in Estrella Village. Díspito postal 85043, Distrito 7.
Um, and that, my name, and good afternoon, my name is, um, Brenda Bustamante, and I am part of the Neighborhood Watch Association, City Council, in Villa, in Estrella Village. My zip code is 85075.
En este año, la asociación aplicó para el subsidio Neighborhood Block Watch Ground, el cual no ha sido aprobado.
Um, this year, uh, the association, um, requested funds for the Neighborhood Block Watch, uh, and we, it has not yet to be, it has not been approved yet.
Por lo tanto, estamos solicitando que se haga otra revisión de la solicitud.
And for, and this is why we are asking for, uh, you to once again review our application.
Y posteriormente, nos dejen saber la decisión final.
And also let us know after the final decision.
Esperamos recibir de parte de ustedes una respuesta favorable.
And we hope to hear, uh, a good response, uh, as a result from, from the application.
Para nosotros es muy importante contar con ese apoyo económico.
For us, it's very important to be able to count on that, um, economic support.
Para poder invertirlo en la seguridad de la comunidad.
To be able to, uh, invest it in the community's safety.
Esto permitiría que las familias vivan más seguras y en plena confianza de salir y convivir.
And this would allow families to be able to live in a safer environment and be able to go out and, and, and be about within the community.
Eh, de convivir en los parques y caminar en por las calles de nuestra comunidad sin el temor de correr peligro.
To be able to go to our parks and, uh, walk around in the streets without fearing that something bad will happen.
Gracias por permitirme dar a conocer una de las prioridades de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for allowing me to voice one of the, uh, necessities that our community has.
Our next speaker is Eric Brickley. Eric, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Hello, my name is Eric Brickley. I'm, yeah, I'm the director of D7 Phoenix. I'm a veteran of two wars. I'm 40, I was born and raised in Phoenix. I live in 85007. I don't get any PAC money, unfortunately. I support NOCAP. All right, it's disconcerting what lies the representative of the fire department will level, while also speaking of the ability and trust of the department he has from the city. The truth is that D7 runoff made it clear. The candidate that align themselves with police and fire lost. I'll say that again. The candidate that aligned themselves with police and fire lost. Congratulations, Councilor Yestman. NOCAP is clearly unjustifiably calling for a decrease in systems used to incarcerate. The NOCAP proposal is merely attempting to increase access. Proven strategies for a community department are what are needed to address what previous programs could not. I'm Eric Brickley, I'm a real caring human. I oppose the current agenda, uh, the current, uh, budget. I stand in support of the NOCAP proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ramon Buella. Ramon, are you on the line? Ramon is not on the line. Our next speaker is Anna Maria Calderón. Anna Maria, are you on the line? Anna Maria is not on the line. Our next speaker is Luis Cantú.
Anna Maria is on the line. Anna Maria, nos escucha?
Sí, aquí estoy en línea.
Okay, uh, muy bien, Anna Maria, mire, le habla, le interprete. Nada más le pido de favor que después de unas dos oraciones haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Ah, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Anna Maria Calderón. Soy residente de Phoenix.
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Maria Calderón, and I'm a resident of Phoenix.
Estoy aquí esta tarde reunida para seguir apoyando a la comunidad. Este, queremos seguir insistiendo en la, en el fondo que se está haciendo para la policía. Queremos hacer estos cambios porque nuestra comunidad requiere de mucha ayuda adicional a la parte de la policía. So queremos ser escuchados en esta tarde para que nuestras voces puedan llegar a los, a los representantes, por favor.
So I am here today to, uh, continue to insist, the monies that are, uh, designated for the police are planned to go to the police. We feel that there's changes that need to be made, and we prefer for the, for that money to be used to help, uh, the needs of the, of the community. And I am here to, with hope that our voices are heard and that the representatives act accordingly.
Ah, también requiero que se hagan ayudas para centros recreacionales para toda la familia, como bibliotecas o centros donde se ejerzan actividades deportivas para nuestros niños y nuestros jóvenes.
Also, we'd like to request more recreational, uh, buildings, uh, such as libraries or community centers where our youth can go and, uh, practice sports and other activities.
Nuestra comunidad también requiere de ayuda para transportación gratis. Hay gente que necesita ir a trabajar, jóvenes que necesitan ir a la escuela y necesitan este apoyo de transportación gratis también.
We also request, uh, tran- free transportation, uh, for there are folks that are trying to get to work and also go to school and need free transportation.
También nos gustaría que hicieran un centro de rehabilitación para gente con adicciones y con enfermedades mentales, apoyo psicológico y el control de emociones.
We would also like to request a rehab center for those who are suffering from substance abuse, centers to help, um, people with mental health issues and also help them with ser- behavioral health services.
Ah, también hay, necesitamos fondos para ayuda para, para la gente que sufrió ahorita con lo del COVID, para que no se vaya más dinero a la policía. Ahorita con lo del COVID, nuestra comunidad también fue muy afectada. Necesitamos apoyo para los, eh, personas que se quedaron sin empleo, para las personas que necesitan, eh, hospitales, doctores, este, físicamente y mentalmente. Ahorita con lo del COVID también fuimos muy afectados y requerimos ayuda para nosotros también, nuestra comunidad.
Also, we would like for the funds, the COVID funds, to be put to work in the community and not in the police. Our community was very affected, uh, affected by this, and we need your support. Uh, there's a lot of people that, uh, because of the COVID are not working, and we need to be able to help them. And also, people require help to be able to go to hospitals, to go to mental health agencies. It's not just physical, it's also the mental aspect. And we need that money to support our community.
Y también como una persona que también pago impuestos, también requiero que mi voz sea escuchada, que nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Esta tarde estamos reunidos aquí.
Uh, su tiempo, uh, concluyó. Uh, she just wanted to add that she also, uh, she, as a taxpayer, she wants her voice to be heard and, uh, in regards to the needs that the community needs.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Luis Cantú. Luis, are you on the line?
Cantú. Luis, se encuentra en la línea?
Luis is not on the line. Our next speaker is Imelda Cárdenas. Imelda, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Imelda Cárdenas. Se encuentra en la línea? Imelda Cárdenas?
Imelda is not on the line. Our next speaker is Javier Cárdenas. Javier, are you on the line?
Javier, se encuentra en la línea?
No.
No. Javier is not on the line.
Javier is not on the line. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Carpenter. Elizabeth, are you on the line? Elizabeth is not on the line. Our next speaker is Alejandra Cervantes. Alejandra, are you on the line? Alejandra is not on the line. Our next speaker is Alma Chávez. Alma, are you on the line?
En la línea.
Alejandra is here and her on the line. Can she speak through this phone?
Alejandra is on the line.
We can proceed with Alejandra Cervantes. Thank you.
Adelante, Alejandra.
Thank you, so my name's Alejandra Cervantes, and I live here in Phoenix. And I'm here to demand city council stop expanding the deadliest police force. Phoenix Police Department is out of control and irreformable. Rewarding and expanding the deadliest police force in the country while we're in the middle of deadly pandemic is reckless and will lead to more black and brown people being killed in our neighborhoods. The department is already getting funding for hundreds of positions that are vacant. And if you insist on adding these new positions to the police department, use the vacancies you have rather than getting more funding for new positions. Allowing a budget that expands Phoenix Police Department while there continues to be a lack of accountability for that department is illogical. Why is the city choosing to expand and blow up an already enormous budget for this deadly and corrupt department? There are 176 vacancies in Phoenix Police Department, and it makes no sense to increase funds to this department to create 75 new positions when we could save taxpayers' dollars and convert these vacancies to cover these positions. Expanding the Phoenix PD while the department is already receiving funding 176 vacancies is fiscally irresponsible. As taxpayers, we demand that the city put an end to this gross misappropriation of funds. These funds belong to the people and should be invested in our communities for substance abuse programs and after-school youth programs instead. Convert the vacancies to cover the requested positions and manage your tax dollars responsibly. And then another demand that I have is COVID relief funds for the people and not the police. Phoenix chose to give the Phoenix Police Department COVID funds in 2020 instead of providing residents more pandemic support. The recently passed MOU opens the door for councils to give relief funds to the police later this year. It's unacceptable, and this is not okay. People are literally dying, and you're choosing to give more money to the police instead of helping those in need to cover rent, medical bills, etc. Any future surplus should go to community resources and not to-
Our next speaker is Hava Derby. Hava, are you on the line?
Uh, I oppose this budget as it stands because not only does it give more money to a deadly police department that already gets too much of our budget, it does not include a true crisis assistance program. Your performative cap does not go far enough in its scope. Although there's no doubt that it has probably helped many in crisis, mental health calls to 911 make up a small percentage of the nonviolent, noncriminal 911 calls that come through. Welfare checks, your grandmother hasn't been heard from, a neighbor calls the cops, there's a stranger passed out on your lawn, your neighbor's playing his video games too loud. This week will make a year since Ryan Whitaker was shot by Phoenix police three times in the back. A white man from a law enforcement family. His neighbors called the cops because he was playing his video games too loud. Despite having a light shown on this deadly and corrupt police department, their violence continues because that is the culture. Trigger happy and violent, it's how they are trained. They're not nearly compassionate enough or trained to answer the calls for crisis from our community. No one is safe from the police. Council, you and your family are not safe from the police. And I don't even know if you guys are listening. I don't see one person with their camera on. Are you paying attention? This is kind of a theme. We are not being heard, and we are demanding a true crisis assistance program. We already know cahoots that model works, and this is what we're basing it on. We demand a true crisis assistance program that meets the demands of the community that wants safety.
Our next speaker is Mayela Diaz Perdón. Mayela, are you on the line? Mirós, are you on the line?
¿Me pueden escuchar? ¿Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
I may ask council number 78, who you serve, to open your eyes to the way the police department is following the budget to extend the police department's budget. It will continue to contribute to the death of black and brown people. And while this is discontinued, there's no accountability. You're worrying the toxic and dangerous behavior. How many wrong and bad people have to continue to die for you to understand? You know, there's hundreds... Um, and... Going top. Um, the police department right now has 176 vacancies that have not been filled since 2018. So why don't you use that money? This money could be used for our community to free transportation, for after-school programs, for rehabilitation centers, for mental health services. Again, if you insist on adding new positions to the police department, use the vacancies that you already have. Today, whatever happens, it will last to see your true colors. And by lack of care you feel to have for your people that you serve, again, we put you where you are and we can take you out of where you're at right now.
Our next speaker is Eric Elmore. Eric, are you on the line?
Eric? Hello?
Eric, your volume is, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up, please? We're having difficulty hearing Eric. Our next speaker is Arturo Escalera. Arturo, are you on the line? Arturo is not on the line. Our next speaker is Martha Felix. Martha, are you on the line?
Martha, ¿se encuentra en la línea?
Martha is not on the line. Our next speaker is Joshua Ferrara. Joshua, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm here to speak in opposition to the budget as it stands, particularly the 20.5 million in public safety reform and responsibility portion. Because I do not feel the community assistance program, the budget, the proposed budget allocates $50 million towards the needs of the community. The city of Phoenix has stated they want a program which mirrors Oregon's Kahoots program. However, that program does not involve the police in a crisis for simply breaking the law. They have a fully capable response unit that is not influenced by the Eugene Police Department. I do not feel we can or will ever be able to say the same of, for the incapable program this budget supports in Phoenix Police. A program that rarely if ever has all its vehicles in operation and takes over 30 minutes to respond to the crisis they are called to alleviate. Instead of investing in the sham of a program, I ask to reallocate the funds to a fully independent assistance program that seeks to support and unify our community rather than demoralize and dismantle it. The NOCAP Coalition, a program of first responders built from folks within our community as well as an established ad hoc committee to ensure that the program meets its goals. Because until you stop the tone deaf, kinds of meeting the community where they are, actually listen and act on what your community is asking, you're only throwing money at a so-called community assistance program that is doomed to fail.
Our next speaker is Annabelle Gabino. Annabelle, are you on the line? Annabelle is not on the line. Our next speaker is Ezekiel Garcia. Ezekiel, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Judy Garcia. Judy, are you on the line? Judy is not on the line. Our next speaker is Noemi Garcia. Noemi, are you on the line? Noemi is not on the line. Our next speaker is Beatrice Garcia. Beatrice, are you on the line? Beatrice is not on the line. Our next speaker is Cynthia Garcia. Cynthia, are you on the line?
Hi, my name is Cynthia Garcia. I'm an advocate for adults with disabilities and mental illness. I'm also a member of the We Rising Project. And I'm sure you've heard all of us speaking at these meetings for the last, what, month or so? I don't remember, but it's the same thing over and over. We're telling you what we want and you guys don't listen to what we want. One out of four people who die at the hands of police have mental illness and you guys want to keep giving money to the police. One out of four people who have been murdered by police, they need to be treated with professionals, not with the fire department, not with the police department, but those who have mental health experience, you know? And you guys are treating police as a one-size-fits-all solution. And it's unfair to the community, it's unfair to police officers as well. It doesn't work to those seeking help. You guys need to adopt the NOCAP demands. We need a department that is separate from the police department, separate from the fire department. The thing is, we don't trust police and even if it's under the fire department, they're going to work with the police and we don't trust that. Last year, I mean, you guys don't even acknowledge this, but the neo-Nazi coin that they passed around for shooting protests in the groin, like, how do you trust someone who does that? How do you trust someone who killed Muhammad Al-Hayman because he was trying to use the bathroom and had a dog? You know? How do you trust people who want to turn off their body camera footages or body cams because they don't want the footage to be exposed?
Our next speaker is Angelica Gastelum. Angelica, are you on the line?
Si, ¿me escuchan?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Angelica Gastelum y pertenezco, así se puede, Neighborhood Association, Distrito 7 en Estrella Village.
Hello, my name is... Angelica Gastelum and I am from Estrella Village. ¿Y qué distrito dijo, Angelica, perdón?
Distrito 7.
The District 7.
Y pertenezco, así se puede, Neighborhood Association.
And I am with the, así se puede, Neighborhood Association.
Estamos aquí ante ustedes para solicitar un centro comunitario en nuestra área porque nos facilitaría las actividades que realizamos en la comunidad.
We are here to request a community center so that we can have the events in such a place that all of activities within our community.
Como por ejemplo una de ellas es la entrega de despensas que hacemos dos veces por mes.
For example, to be able to give to those dispensaries, which we do two times a month.
Y no tenemos un lugar para hacerlo.
We don't have a place to do that.
Hasta el momento nos prestan el estacionamiento de casa Pedro Ruiz.
Right now, we can only count with the parking lot at Pedro Ruiz that they allow us to use.
Que son unos departamentos residenciales para personas de la tercera edad.
Which are residential apartments for the elderly.
Y como ustedes saben, en verano las temperaturas son demasiado altas y es muy difícil para las voluntarias estar bajo el sol por varias horas.
And as you know, with the increasing temperatures during the summertime, it's very hard for the volunteers to bring this service.
El centro comunitario que nos queda más cerca es Desert West Community Center, localizado en Maryvale, aproximadamente cuatro millas de distancia.
The closest community center is Desert West located in Maryvale, which is four miles away from us.
Sin embargo, no hay una ruta de autobús que llegue hasta ahí y las personas que no tienen vehículo propio no pueden hacer uso de estos servicios.
And granted, there is no bus circulator or bus route to go to that location and the people who don't have transportation have no way of being able to acquire those benefits.
Nos gustaría que nos apoyaran en este proyecto y que también se incluya una librería dentro del centro comunitario.
We would like for you to get support from you in this project and also to include a library within the community center.
Ya que es una necesidad básica con la que toda comunidad debería de contar.
Because that is a basic need that any community should be able to rely on.
Para que de esta manera nuestros hijos tengan este valioso recurso ya que la librería más cercana se encuentra en Maryvale, aproximadamente cuatro millas también.
That way, we can have this valuable resource. Granted, that the nearest library is four miles away in Maryvale.
Muchas gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Our next speaker is Tyler Griffin. Tyler, are you on the line? Tyler, are you on the line? Tyler is no longer on the line. Our next speaker is Julie Gonnigl. Julie, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Julie Gonnigl. I've spent the better part of the last two years talking to Phoenicians about how they feel about policing and prosecution in their city. Mayor, members of council, many Phoenicians are absolutely terrified because our city remains home to one of the most violent police forces in the nation. And over this time, I heard heartbreaking and inspiring stories of neighbors and community members who had to work together to keep each other safe because they could not trust the police. There are reasons that folks do not reach out for support and I hope that this council hears the chorus of voices who are calling not for an expansion of police funding, but instead a reinvestment in community. In one of the largest cities in the nation, it is totally unacceptable that some of our residents do not feel safe. I hope that when the city of Phoenix hears calls to expand the crisis assistance program, that they hear calls not just for any crisis assistance program, but for NOCAP in particular, which is based on the best practices and best evidence of other jurisdictions learning the lessons that they have learned. Because you cannot build trust if this program cooperates as an extension of police. Extending the current program does build trust, but implementing NOCAP does. You cannot call on community for feedback and yet implement a program that doesn't answer to community. And it is for this reason that NOCAP is called for an ad hoc community program to evaluate and oversee its success. Mayor and members of council, they are calling for an independent and community-involved crisis assistance program. And while we respect the work that this council has put forward on this budget and the leadership you have shown, please, no more half-measures. Please, no budget without NOCAP. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Tom Gonnigl. Tom, are you on the line?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on the line. Yeah, I'm...
Tom, we're having difficulty hearing you.
All right, um, this one.
We can hear you, yes. Please proceed.
All right. I do not support this budget because of the expansion of the community assistance program or the cap. The reason that I do not support this is because... ...run by community members is unsuccessful. There have been several instances of the Phoenix Police Department...
Tom, we can't hear you. We will move on to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Maria Gutierrez. Maria, are you on the line? Maria is not on the line. Our next speaker is Manuel Gutierrez. Manuel, are you on the line? Manuel is not on the line. Our next speaker is Hannah Heyman. Hannah, are you on the line?
I'm sorry, Maria is on the line.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Maria is on the line.
Maria Gutierrez, please proceed.
Maria, puede proceder, le habla el intérprete. Nada más le pido, por favor, que haga una breve pausa después de cada unas dos oraciones para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante, María.
Sí. Acá de Kathy Gallegos esperamos ser escuchados por usted. No queremos que pongan las nuevas 75 posiciones de la policía.
Mayor Kathy Gallego, we hope that you hear our voices. We do not want the 75 new positions in the police department.
Necesitamos que inviertan en nuestra comunidad. Estamos exigiendo transportación gratis para todos los que... Para toda la comunidad.
We would like that money instead to be invested in our communities. For example, we would like free transportation to be offered for everyone in our community.
El departamento de policía está fuera de control, es inreformable.
The police department is out of control.
Recompensar, expadir la fuerza policial.
And it's not necessary to expand the police department.
Más mortífera del país especialmente mientras estamos en medio de una pandemia mortal.
Especially with the reputation they have in the country and now that we have this disease upon us.
Es imprudente, significa que más personas de color muerdan en nuestros vecindarios.
And what that translates into, which would be wrong, is for, if we don't have the support, it translates into more people of color being affected or even passing away.
El departamento ya está teniendo fondos para ciertos de impuestos. Para ciertos puestos, digo.
The department is already receiving money for certain positions within the department.
Si, e... Se insisten en agregar estos nuevos impuestos al departamento de policía o sea, vacantes que tienen el lugar de tener más fondos para nuestros puestos, para nuevos puestos.
And as a taxpayer, I insist that instead of expanding the positions in the police department to just use the vacant ones, to fill the vacant ones that still need to be filled.
Nosotros también.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Manuel Gutierrez. Manuel, are you on the line?
Nuestro siguiente interradera es Manuel Gutierrez, ¿se encuentra en la línea? Manuel Gutierrez.
Manuel is not on the line. Our next speaker is Hannah Heyman. Hannah, are you on the line?
City council is today proposing an expansion of their crisis assistance program, CAP, as an alternative to their violent police. It sounds good at first glance, but when you dig deeper, you find the CAP and the NOCAP proposal are both anti-black and ableist expansions to the power of police. Just because CAP employees don't carry guns doesn't mean they're not violent. And saying that somehow an alternative to police is a blatant lie. In the majority of situations where CAP is called out, the police are already on the scene and are calling in CAP to forcibly cage people against their will. Even when the police are not already at the scene, CAP... Even when the police are not already at the scene, CAP exists only to cage people in so-called mental health institutions. These institutions are jails by another name. CAP employees petition to have people caged in these institutions where people are forcibly medicated and injected with drugs against their will. Programs like CAP and NOCAP target disabled black people and unleash the violence of the state against these most vulnerable members of our communities. This is not compassionate care. This is more anti-black ableist violence. It is an ableist policy written to exclude disabled people from society. Disabled people have not been included in writing these policies. It is a way for the city to jail people without trials. This policy was written without black disabled people in the room. It is genocidal. Programs like CAP and NOCAP are designed at their core to violently remove disabled people from society, especially black and indigenous disabled people. Kate sits up here with her expensive white smile and is pushing this program through because she wants the public relations win after she spent the year supporting and encouraging anti-black violence. Make no mistake, the city's budget this year is more anti-black than ever. Any yes vote by any member of council is unacceptable when they're increasing positions by seventy-five and supporting this violent program. In addition to supporting the vi- the genocide of CAP and NOCAP, the city is proposing these seventy-five new positions to the most violent cops in the nation. This is not an investment in our city. They're driving the knife of anti-black ableist violence deeper and twisting it.
Our next speaker is Viridiana Hernandez. Viridiana, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, perfect. Hi, this is Vidi with Bullet and Action. Um, and here, during this process, I joined hundreds of people and over sixty percent of the total people that commented in the budget to demand police accountability. Instead of listening to the national outcry and the local outcry, you instead, as a city, are proposing, are trying to add seventy-five positions to this department. Meanwhile, Phoenix PD has a hundred and seventy-six vacancies that they have not been able to fill since two thousand and eighteen. We need to take these proposed positions from those vacancies. No other department gets to have a hundred and six vacant, a hundred and seventy-six vacant positions for years and yet are allowed to keep them and grow their budget. Other departments in the city are constantly getting denied additional positions, especially if they have vacancies or they came under budget, except the Phoenix Police Department. This budget is only better because of the ideas that community members have given throughout this year, throughout years. You don't get to take that community's ideas and yet reject our demands to live in a safe and healthy community, free of police violence and free of policing as has, as we, as it exists. By taking these positions from the vacancies that haven't been filled since two thousand and eighteen, we can open up three point two million dollars that can go to the needs of community, such as transportation, diapers, free transportation, things that can help climate justice, mental health resources, and addiction support, and programs for, after school programs for young people and youth and children. Mayor Gallego, city council, listen to the sixty percent of the comments that participated in your process, listen to the hundreds of community members that have shown up, but also to the cities across the country that are addressing and properly responding to mitigate police violence that is a crisis nationally.
Our next speaker is Anna Laura Juárez. Anna Laura, are you on the line?
Is on the line. Muy bien, Anna Laura, ¿me escucha? Anna. Muy bien. Mira, le habla el intérprete. Le pido nada más que después de cada dos oraciones haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Sí, desde, yo digo que la ciudad de Phoenix debería haber optado por pro- pro- priorizar un presupuesto.
Uh, que, que debieron de haber optado por hacer qué cosa, perdón?
Pro- pro- priorizar, priorizar.
Por qué?
Un presupuesto.
Poner priorizar un presupuesto de qué, perdón?
Del, de, de que ayudaría a los más afectados con COVID. A recuperar.
Um, and what I, I think the city of, of Phoenix should opt out from the current priorities and instead, uh, focus on helping those that have been affected by COVID.
¿A quién? Adelante, Anna Laura.
Sí, este, de los de la pandemia, en su lugar crearon presupuesto que pro- pro- prioriza, prioriza la esperencia de la. De la departamento de policía y su respues, su respuesta es, su respuesta.
And instead, what they did is they, um, opted to, uh, support expanding the police department.
Y no más recursos a la, a la policía.
So no more funds to the police.
Sí, y, y también quería ver si podían investigar sobre dónde yo estoy viviendo. Uh, que según los policías están unidos con los, con las man- managers de, de y de los, de las tráelas, de las tráelas. Para, para ir y luego nos están cobrando cien dólares cada vez que ellos van cuando uno tiene algún problema.
Uh, I would also like to propose that you investigate, uh, what is happening where I live. Uh, the police has made, uh, it sounds like the police has made some kind of an arrangement with the, uh, with the landlords there in the, um, mobile home community where we live, and every time we make a call that we need assistance with something, we are being charged a hundred dollars when we reach out to the police.
Sí, porque yo digo que ya no es una seguridad para nosotros, ya no, yo vivo en, en el distrito siete, sesenta y siete Avenida Van Buren.
I live in the sixty-seventh avenue and Van Buren. It's district seven, and we don't feel safe anymore.
Adelante, Anna Laura. Anna Laura, mm, no le escuchamos. No sé si puso un, un, el teléfono. Adelante. Eso es todo, okay. Gracias, Anna Laura.
Okay, that, that will be it. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonas Casé. Jonas, are you on the line? Jonas is not on the line. Our next speaker is Sabrina Carnegis. Sabrina, are you on the line? Sabrina is not on the line. Our next speaker is Cameron Noos. Cameron, are you on the line? Cameron is not on the line. Our next speaker is Katie Cradjci. Katie, are you on the line? Katie is not on the line. Our next speaker is Ben Loughlin. Ben, are you on the line?
Uh, I'm here, um, but I'm actually gonna allow, uh, Yasmin to speak for me because she needs to leave. Um, so, uh.
I'm sorry, we, uh.
Hello, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, we don't substitute speakers. I'm sorry, we don't substitute speakers. So Ben Loughlin, will you please speak now? Thank you.
Ben, please proceed. Thank you.
She's, uh, Yasmin is registered, but she has to leave. Um, can she speak for me? We wanna swap. So I will speak for her later.
Congratulations for having me.
Ben Loughlin, I'm sorry. Ben, you are saying, who is this speaker? Yasmin?
Uh, yeah.
Saga Stume? So you're, you're going to speak for Yasmin later?
Yes. Yep, and she's gonna speak for me. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, I'm here. Um, hi, my name is Yasmin Sagastume. I'm a member of District Five and I'm calling to oppose the budget. Um, the police should not be receiving more money to expand their police force when they haven't even been able to, uh, fill those vacant positions that they've had for years. We need to convert the seventy-five positions to fill the vacancies and from that get three point two million that can actually be invested into community programs. Um, that would make the community stronger and healthier. The police department shouldn't be allowed to hoard money. Other departments that don't use all of their budgets get budget cuts. Reasonably so, right? Because that's how budgets work. Hundreds of community members have been showing up for months to tell you that we don't want to expand the police department. And I've been speaking at these since I was like seventeen, asking for the same thing year after year. And I'm tired, honestly. And we, we're asking for the bare minimum, and it's like pulling teeth. Y'all, we do so much to learn and to read. We go back and talk to community, and we come here to be, try to be knowledgeable for, for y'all to listen to us, and you still question our authority as community members. We shouldn't have to do all of that. We already live here and that should be enough. That's it. I'm, I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Matt Leach. Matt, are you on the line? Matt is not on the line. Our next speaker is Gladiela Lopez. Gladiela, are you on the line?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, I'm speaking, um, um, for the stop of the expanding of the deadliest police force. It's insane that I live in a city with one of the most deadliest police force, um, in the country. And it's literally so embarrassing. And of course, the people witnessing everything do absolutely nothing. Um, this needs to stop. Everyone who spoke today had some experience with police or want a better future in Phoenix because they understand the struggles. Like people dealing with addiction and psychological issues, they are requesting more and better facilities for people, and I definitely agree. Having to speak at council, it's weird because you guys should already know the things you guys have to do. It's like, do you guys understand what humans are? Do you guys understand the, the ideas that humans don't have to die? Um. You know, it, isn't it embarrassing having youth tell you, the old people of the city, that they have to start doing something? Um, there is lack of accountability in this disgusting force, especially how they have police included with the force. People die in Phoenix by Phoenix PD. There's, there should not be any more murders. Thank you. I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Gladiela Lopez Felix. Gladiela, are you on the line? Gladiela is not on the line. Our next speaker is Guadalupe Lozoya. Guadalupe, are you on the line? Guadalupe is not on the line. Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line? Tina is not on the line. Our next speaker is Samuel Martin. Samuel, are you on the line?
Yes, uh, my name is Samuel Martin. I'm a legal officer coordinator for the National Lawyers Guild. I've observed probably over a hundred actions this past year of civil rights rallies and marches in Phoenix. I bring this up to say that as a neutral party, I've observed that there is something fundamentally wrong with how the Phoenix PD operates. I do not believe there is any need to increase funding for this department when there are so many unresolved issues that we have seen surface this year. Are you really saying that half a billion dollars is not enough? That is an inconceivable amount of money, especially when we are talking about creating brand-new departments that you're saying are fully operational and only fifteen million. I am here to ask the council to oppose the current budget proposal. The city needs to create an ordinance to adopt the NOCAP coalition's eighteen fundamental demands for a crisis assistance program. The city is essentially being vague on what they're funding, and it gives the impression that you don't want to guarantee a safe cap program. It should not be an issue to write this ordinance. If you are truly trying to create a serious crisis assistance program, you have said you want to mirror Kahoots. These demands are all adopted by Kahoots. You said you want to listen to Phoenix communities. These items were literally drafted by conversations with stakeholders. The NOCAP coalition, it consists of organizations such as the Black Mothers Forum, United Collective, Sanor Prevention Works, the National Lawyers Guild, Beach Phoenix, Phoenix LLC, and many other mutual aid and community groups and six hundred individuals that have all weighed in to say what they want to see in a safe, trustworthy cap program. And that includes all of the eighteen items that the NOCAP coalition has drafted. Uh, what the council can do now is oppose this budget until we see these items strained out and trust is actually built with the public. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Georgina Martinez. Georgina, are you on the line?
Nah. Georgina.
Georgina is not on the line.
Not on the line.
Our next speaker is Christopher Martinez. Christopher, are you on the line? Christopher, we can hear you. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, um, um, I would like to state my, um, my opposition to this budget as is. Um, for several reasons that have already been, um, um, given by, uh, other callers. And they're the same reasons that we've been saying all along. The, um, the majority of people have given input on the budget, I've been saying all along, but have been ignored. Uh, the police do not need more money. The police should have less money. The vacancies are there, and you want to give them another slush fund. It makes absolutely no sense. Um, NOCAP, I, I don't even know why we're, I would, I shouldn't go through the list because we aren't heard. Mayor Gallego, when you were running for office, I can't believe that I convinced people to vote for you instead of Valenzuela. I mean, what difference would it have made on these issues? What fundamental difference would it have made? The communities that are most impacted are telling you what they want, and you were outright ignoring them and listening to the communities that aren't impacted. The stakeholders have something to say about this, and you are ignoring them. You should be ashamed of yourself for ignoring the people. Um, and, and you congratulate yourself on a transparent process when the union negotiations for the police were done in private. The police union went and, and tried to scrub the social media accounts of police who are, um, who are, who are, um, having racist posts, and you want to do that in secret? To negotiate with a racist organization in secret? Um, again, I'm gonna say I oppose this. The reasons have already been stated countless times. And I think you should really be ashamed and take a hard look at yourself for ignoring the majority of, of people in the community who have already stated this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is April McHugh. April, are you on the line? April is not on the line. Our next speaker is Amy Maglio. Amy, are you on the line?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, well, before you start my clock, I wanted to let you know that Eric Elmore is also on the line and available, if you can circle back to him.
Thank you, please proceed.
All right. My name is Amy, I'm with NoCap. I have an ADA 2E, twice exceptional diagnosis. And I'm also the individual who spoke at two of the budget hearings regarding their experience as a patient on a mental health call at Cave Creek in Cactus several years ago. No ticket, no crime, no three-day hold even because they said I was cognizant, but I was triggered. And because the paramilitary showed up and triggered me further, I ended up sprawled on a barbed wire fence. They had to peel me off and put me in a regular hospital for the night and I still have scars today, almost 10 years later. The city began this budget year with a quote from Maya Angelou at the presentation of the trial budget and with the repeated statement that the city would use comments from the budget meetings, results from the budget tools, and community input to determine the vote. Having seen the results of the budget tools, having attended all of the budget meetings, having noted how many citizens are for or opposed to the budget as it stands, if the city was telling an ounce of truth all those times they made those statements, council members must vote no to today's budget. With regard to the city's proposed $15 million allocation to the already existing cap program under the fire department, which the city's own 2020 report states is a failure that takes 37 minutes to respond to calls even when cars are ready, NoCap has had members call into every meeting to explain in detail why this is a failure from the get-go. 600 residents individually signed our letter with 18 demands based off of empirically successful cap programs that y'all have studied. We know because we saw the report and we saw the eight cities you looked at. Y'all know you are pushing a city-driven initiative which Tim Black, director of the oldest, most successful, most modeled cap in the nation, stated is a setup for failure. This is why in addition to the 600 individuals, groups such as the National Lawyers Guild, the Black Mothers Forum, the Unity Collective, Feed Phoenix, Phoenix LLC, Sonoran Prevention Works, Sidewalk Project Phoenix, We Rising, and the National Grassroots Law Project have all signed on to the letter, onto the Coalition demands. We all collectively oppose this cap allocation and oppose this budget as it-
We will go to Eric Elmore for his comment. Eric, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Eric Elmore. I'm a native of the valley and a white, middle-aged male. I'm speaking in opposition to the current budget as it relates to crisis assistance. I have sat through multiple previous budget meetings related to NoCap. I have listened to with the overwhelming majority of the Phoenix community and the evidence is saying loudly and clearly, the current budget is not a reflection of either. You as council members have it in your power to not only massively reduce harm, but to substantially improve and in fact, save the lives of others in crisis. You all know that you can and should reject the current budget in favor of restructuring it to meet the demands concisely and repeatedly put forth by NoCap. Nonviolent crisis response should be moved into the hands of trained compassionate health professionals and away from the Phoenix PD, which consistently ranks as one of the deadliest police forces in the US, a country whose police forces kill their fellow citizens at a rate that dwarfs that of any other first-world nation. If you choose to accept the budget in its current state, you as Phoenix council members would be failing in your most basic mission to listen to and protect the valley community. You would be actively sanctioning the police assaults and murders that are absolutely certain to follow if you fail. People will live or die as a direct consequence of your actions. I hope this stays with you. I hope you sleep well at night. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ismael Moreno. Ismael, are you on the line?
Ismael, no se escucha, ¿se encuentra en la línea?
No se encuentra.
Ismael no se encuentra. Okay, Ismael is not on the line.
Ismael is not on the line. Our next speaker is Natividad Moreno. Natividad, are you on the line?
La siguiente oradora es Natividad Moreno, ¿se encuentra?
Sí.
Okay, Natividad, le habla el intérprete. Le habla el intérprete a Natividad, buenas tardes. Nada más le voy a pedir de favor que después de cada dos oraciones haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante, Natividad.
Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Natividad Moreno. Yo estoy aquí apoyando a mis compañeros aquí de la comunidad de West Phoenix. Y estoy hablando por qué no a las 75 nuevas posiciones de la policía. Ese dinero lo necesitamos en nuestra comunidad como en transportación gratuita, centros de rehabilitación.
Ah, that's on. My name is Natividad Moreno and I am here in supporting my fellow community members of West Phoenix. I am opposed to the 75 new positions being proposed. We urge you to instead invest the monies in other community needs such as free transportation, providing free transportation, and also community centers. Adelante.
Centros de rehabilitación para jóvenes y adultos en drogadicción.
Also rehab centers for free rehab services available and rehab centers for the youth and adults with substance abuse.
Programas después de la escuela para niños y jóvenes.
Programs, after-school programs for the youth.
También queremos que los fondos de ayuda de COVID-19 sea para la gente que lo necesita, no para la policía, como nuestra comunidad inmigrante sin estatus.
And we also demand that the COVID monies be used to meet the community needs and not the police. For example, it could be also used to help our undocumented members in the community.
Queremos que dejen de expandir la policía más mortífera y racista.
We want you to stop expanding the brutal police department.
Gracias por dejarme estar.
And thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Sandra Netkin. Sandra, are you on the line? Sandra is not on the line. Our next speaker is Jesús Ochoa. Jesús, are you on the line?
¿Se encuentra en la línea?
Jesús is not on the line.
Jesús is not on the line. Our next speaker is Diane Post. Diane, are you on the line? Diane is not on the line. Our next speaker is Jacob Rayford. Jacob, are you on the line?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So of course I oppose, my name is Jacob Rayford, I'm from We Rising as well as a member of the local NoCap Coalition. It's an initiative for an independent first responder department specializing in areas such as behavioral health, substance abuse, and shelter community. I mean, you already know, we've been engaging with members of this council since last fall. This is prior to City Manager Zerker presenting cap as a new idea, but really it's just reinvigorating a pre-existing and historically limited scope program existing under a first responder department whose culture does not align with those who practice behavioral work or social services. Now, too many questions regarding police involvement, the implementation of this program have received no response or a best ambiguous answer. So people in behavioral crisis as cap is structured could be subjected to police culture through loophole involvement or indirectly by, you know, fire departments subsiding cap units who endorse the conservative philosophies of police culture. This is just acknowledging workplace culture and how conflicting ideologies is a volatile combination and precarious situations that behavioral specialists engage in. So why have y'all not yet sought engagement from the public today? You know, certified stakeholders operating on the front line, not behind desks. Civilians who come from impacted demographics and disproportionately targeted communities. Of course, black and brown communities, because we get the short end of the stick when it comes to behavioral health programs. It's essential that we have our stake in this. Without being too accusatory, hearing word of secret backdoor meetings with members of academia rather than engaging in transparent public discussions, it just feels clandestine. This is how we utilize our taxpayer dollars? This is not a feather in the cap of your political careers. We don't need platitudes, we need hard work. This is literally a matter of life and death. It's important that we know this council is educated on this initiative that NoCap is presenting as it mirrors Kahoots. Transparency is the only way it'll work. Units must show up, provide aid, leave as little of a footprint as possible, no background checks, no reporting information to the police, no circumnavigating HIPAA by accessing and sharing private data via access, which would disproportionately impact communities and further racial disparity. Now, council member, I'm sorry, we are hoping that you coming from a progressive outspoken generation will see how essential this program is and how-
Our next speaker is Gabriela Rios. Gabriela, are you on the line?
Gabriela, ¿se encuentra en la línea? Gabriela Rios?
No.
No, Gabriela is not on the line.
Gabriela is not on the line. Our next speaker is Juana Rita.
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Juana Rita. Juana, ¿se encuentra en la línea? Juana?
Sí, hola, buenas tardes.
Okay.
¿Me escucha?
Sí, si le escucho, Juana, le habla el intérprete, buenas tardes. Nada más le pido por favor que haga una breve pausa después de cada dos oraciones para interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante, Juana.
Okay, eso es. Bueno, pues buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Juana. Y también estoy aquí para pedir que dejen de expandir la policía más mortífera de aquí del país.
Hello, my name is Juana and I am here to demand to stop funding the police, the most brutal police in the nation.
No queremos que este departamento agarre más fondos para contratar a otros 75 puestos cuando ya tienen fondos para cientos de puestos vacantes.
We don't think, we don't want for them to expand 75 new positions when they already have 175, they already have funds for the 175 positions that they have yet to fill.
Si quieren agarrar estos nuevos puestos al departamento de policía, ¿por qué no usan las vacantes que ya tienen en lugar de tener más fondos para nuevos puestos?
Why don't they just use the money that they have for the positions that need to be filled?
Porque hay 175 vacantes, 176 fueron vacantes en Phoenix y no tiene sentido agregar más.
Because there's, right now, 176 vacant positions here for the Phoenix Police Department and it doesn't make sense to expand.
También queremos que los fondos de ayuda que recibieron de COVID se usen en la comunidad, no para la policía.
We also want the funds that were received for COVID to be used for the community, not the police.
Porque ustedes eligieron dar ese fondo al departamento de policía en el 2020.
Because you chose to give that money to the police department instead during the year of 2020.
Es inaceptable que hagan mal uso de ese dinero. Esos fondos deben de usarse para necesidades básicas de la comunidad.
That is unacceptable, the way that the money has been used when instead it should be used to fill the needs of the community.
Este dinero creo que debe ir directamente a la gente de esta comunidad y no al departamento de policía, que además es el mal portifero del país.
The money should go to help the people that need it in our communities and not the police department that is one of the most brutal in the country.
Para la alcaldesa Kay Gallegos, le queremos pedir que no, que por favor vote no a los 75 puestos de policía que quieren agregar. Queremos transportación grande, programas de escuela, centros de rehabilitación y de salud mental.
What we ask Mayor Kay Gallego is to vote no on the 75 positions for the police department and instead support us with free transportation, rehab centers, after-school programs, and mental health agencies.
Por favor, le pido a la alcaldesa que escuche y que apoya nuestra comunidad para hacer que nuestras demandas sean puestas, verdad, en el presupuesto.
We ask the mayor to please hear our voices and to fulfill the demands and to be taken into consideration into this new budget.
Pues muchas gracias y espero que nuestras voces sean escuchadas.
And thank you and we hope that our voices are being heard.
Our next speaker is Berta Rita. Berta, are you on the line?
Nuestra siguiente oradora es Berta Rita. ¿Se encuentra, Berta? Berta Rita?
Sí.
Berta, ¿me escucha?
Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes, Berta, le habla el intérprete. Nada más le voy a pedir que haga una breve pausa después de cada dos oraciones para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante, Berta.
Sí, buenas tardes, en primeras, me voy a dirigir para el alcalde Kay Gallego.
Okay, hello, my name is Berta. First and foremost, I'm going to direct myself to our mayor Kay Gallego.
Sí, en primera le gustaría pedir y exigir que Gallegos haga un cambio con estas juntas porque para otros, para los padres, es muy difícil juntarnos a las dos y media ya que nuestros niños están en las escuelas. Y hoy este día, pues desgraciadamente hubo graduaciones y todos. Nosotros somos un grupo de padres pero muchos faltaron por esas razones.
First, should we ask you and demand to, Mayor Kay Gallego, to change the times of these meetings because 2:30, our children are in the process of getting out of school. And right now, because of graduation, many of the people that wanted to participate weren't able to make it.
Sí, porque muchos padres nos gustaría participar en estas juntas y este, el horario que nos tienen siempre a las dos y media, ese no es conveniente para nosotros.
Yes, because there's a lot of parents, a lot of us parents that want to participate in these meetings, but 2:30 is very inconvenient for us.
Yo espero que esta vez este Kay Gallego escuche muy bien y que no se haga la sorda sobre las peticiones de nuestra comunidad.
And we hope that she really takes into account and listens what we ask and not just, not hear us.
Porque me explico que cada año ellos no tengan la capacidad de pensar en qué es lo mejor para nuestra comunidad, que solamente estén pensando en beneficios de la policía, ya que año tras año nosotros hemos estado aquí en reuniones pidiendo qué son las necesidades de nuestra comunidad y hasta esta fecha no hemos visto ni un cambio.
Because it's time for them to start thinking about the benefits of the community and not the benefits of the police when year after year, we are here asking and telling you what the needs are and years go by and we don't see any changes.
No necesitamos que pongan las nuevas, hay cinco posiciones al departamento de policía. Permitir un presupuesto que explique el departamento de policía mientras sigue haciendo una falta de responsabilidad para ese departamento es ilógico.
And we do not want 75 new positions to open for that department. We feel that it just doesn't make sense to do that.
Porque la ciudad está diciendo expandir y hacer explotar un presupuesto ya enorme para este departamento corrupto.
Why is it that they're wanting to expand the department and give them more funds when they are a corrupt department?
Hay 176 puestos vacantes en ese departamento de policía. No tiene sentido aumentar los fondos para ese departamento para crear 75 nuevos puestos. Podríamos ahorrar dólares a los contribuyentes y convertir esos puestos vacantes para cubrir esos puestos.
There's 175 vacant positions and it doesn't make sense to fund, to ask for funds for 75 more. Instead, we should save that money, the taxpayer money, and use, put it to good use to the needs of the community.
Por favor, Kay Gallego, necesitamos que tome acción, ya.
Thank you, please continue your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Rodriguez.
El, se dio el, perdón, se le terminó el tiempo, nada más te voy a relatar lo último que dijo, muchas gracias. Uh, we just want, um, uh, Kay Gallegos to please, uh, to listen to us and, and take action. Don't just think about your families, but also think of the wellness, um, of the families in your community.
Our next speaker-
También, si me perquita, ya llegó la señora Martha Feliz.
Um, Martha-
Our next speaker is Cynthia Rodriguez.
Cynthia, uh, eh, perdón, ¿están pidiendo por Cynthia Rodriguez?
No, estoy, pero te puedo dar los nombres de las personas que pasaron, pero que no los nombraron, que quería que no habían llegado. Nomás de cuatro, y son las-
There's, there's four people that were called on before, but they're here, and I can give you their names, uh, to see if we can give them an opportunity to speak.
I apologize, uh, we cannot return to those names, um, we're continuing on with our list. Is Cynthia Rodriguez available?
No, vamos, uh, dispense, pero no vamos a regresar a las personas que ya llamamos, uh, porque tenemos, seguimos, vamos a seguir con la línea, la lista de personas que están esperando. Eh, ¿está Cynthia Rodriguez disponible?
Uh, no, pueden pasar en su lugar.
Can somebody else take her place?
No, I apologize, um, thank you so much. Our next speaker is Ben Loughlin. Ben, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Um, my name is Ben Loughlin, and I'm a resident of District Four. Uh, I am in opposition to this budget today because y'all are still trying to expand this department despite hundreds of folks turning out, um, for months to ask you to stop funding, stop funding this department. The 75 positions proposed for the police department need to come from the nearly 200 vacant sworn positions, um, in the police department. These vacancies allow the department to hoard tens of millions of dollars of unaccountable funding every year. This money should be going to support community programs that actually make us safer. Converting vacancies to fulfill the sworn positions will give 3.2 million back to the community to fund desperately needed resources like after-school programs, free public transit, and mental health services. Across the country, cities are looking for ways to reduce police budgets because they believe the thousands of community members who tell them police are making them safer, or police aren't making them safer. Uh, Phoenix residents have spent the last six months telling y'all that police are not making us safer. Do not expand this department. Uh, use the vacancies to fill these 75 positions. And stop letting the department hoard millions of dollars, uh, and give the, give community their money back. Also, we have so many people here that really want to speak, and it is pretty messed up that y'all aren't going to go back and let that happen. That's all.
Our next speaker is Maria Sanchez. Maria, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Maria Sanchez. I'm a resident in District Three, and I'm here to oppose budget. And just also to really echo what just Ben just said, I want to remind this, this council and these elected officials that you should be wanting us to be speaking at these meetings. These are just, the fact that we don't even know where next, I've been sitting here like, trying to make dinner, trying to do all these things while I'm at home thinking that I'm, this meeting is going to be accessible. How about we invest in a screen, right here, I can see I have one minute 33 seconds to speak. How about we invest in a screen where it allows us to know who the next five speakers are going to be? How about that? Because you're, you're saying you can't go back to people, and then you just, you can't go back to them, you give them like two seconds to respond. It's unacceptable. Anyways, I'm, I want, I'm here to speak because we are asking council to move to, move the proposed police department positions to be created from sworn vacancies, rather than adding funding for 75 new positions. I also want to challenge our elected officials to start thinking of alternative jobs to replace officers. This whole strategy that you proposed in February of civilizing positions that are currently held by sworn officers is unacceptable. It also shows the lack of imagination of these elected officials. Obviously, community doesn't want to become cops anymore. You keep, you keep funding these positions where people, community is telling you, we don't want them. So how about you, as elected officials, start thinking of other positions that are going to replace them? Let's, let's talk about how police are not keeping us safe, right? They only spend four percent, four percent of their time responding to matters of violence, and only respond to one, one. 911 call every five hours they work. They can definitely be replaced, this idea of giving them more money, right? For 2021, we said, cool, we're going to expand and allocate funding, 743 million for police, and now you're saying that 719 million is going to be used, but you want to give 786 million for-
Our next speaker is Marciala Sandoval. Marciala, are you on the line?
Yes, Sandoval. Uh, I'm sorry, also, just wanted to mention in regards to going back to the four people, a comment was made earlier that, um, we were advised that, um, people, eventually, people, people that didn't get a chance, um, to, to speak were going to be circling back to them.
Thank you. Is Marciala on the line?
Eh, ¿se encuentra Marciala en la línea? Marciala Sandoval, ¿se encuentra en la línea?
Marciala is not on the line. Our next speaker is Lydia Santiago. Is Lydia on the line? Lydia is not on the line. Our next speaker is Jessica Spencer. Jessica, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed. Jessica, we can hear you. Jessica, are you on the line?
Hello, 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 hello.
Jessica, we can hear you. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Jessica. I am a Navy veteran and a house owner. I work in Phoenix, and I would like to oppose this budget. Uh, as a Navy veteran, I would like to tell others who are listening that the military coins that were used by the military police that was exposed by ABC is a perversion of military tradition and honors. They're using our coins to promote violence against its own citizens, citizens. I have called about this before. We are funding a very violent police force. We are funding them to pretend to be military troops against our own civilians. These positions sit unfilled for a reason. Nobody trusts the police. I don't trust the police. Why would I trust them? They're pretending to be paramilitary units running around hurting their own civilians. We need a proper crisis response program without police. That's all that's fucking happening here, and it's disgusting, and I do not-
That language is unacceptable.
We'll go to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Gerardo Urbina. Gerardo, are you on the line?
Adelante, Gerardo, me escucha. Gerardo?
Sí, le escucho.
Muy bien, mire, le habla, le interprete, muy buenas tardes, nada más le pido, por favor, que después de cada dos oraciones haga una breve pausa para poder interpretar lo mejor posible. Adelante.
Okay, primeramente, quiero agradecerles a la alcaldesa y a su equipo de trabajo que nos den la oportunidad de expresarnos y ser parte de, de soluciones, no solo aportar problemas.
Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the mayor and the council members to allow us to participate and, uh, have a discussion in finding solutions, not just pointing out the problems.
Eh, en primer lugar, estamos en contra de expandir más la policía, ya que es una de las más mortíferas del país, y eso lo dice los números. Tenemos miedo.
First of all, um, we want to express that I, we are opposed to the expansion of the 75 positions in the police department, um, especially with the reputation that they have for the brutality, um, in, in the nation.
Los fondos de ayuda del COVID son para la gente, y no puede ser que los reciban para la policía, ya que ellos son nocivos contra la gente, o sea, contra nuestra comunidad.
The funds, uh, the COVID funds were designated to go to the people and not to the police.
Que nos están dando la oportunidad de, de exponer soluciones, hay muchas, yo no creo que no tengan la capacidad de, de afrontarlas.
And you are asking us to, uh, participate and offer solutions. I, I, I don't believe that you guys don't have the capacity to come up with other ways, uh, to, to help.
Ahorita yo había una compañera que tiene 20 años viviendo en un lugar sin banquetas y sin carretera. Eso es una vez.
Just a little bit ago, we heard the story of one of the community members that's been living in her area for 20 years, and it's never, um, her streets have never been maintained, and they don't even have sidewalks.
A mí se me da la oportunidad de exponer, yo les digo, fácil cuatro, cinco soluciones que ustedes pueden hacer, pero no quieren.
And if you ask me to give you some options, I'll easily give you four or five of them, but you guys won't do anything in regards to it if I do.
Necesitamos centros de desarrollo integral, centros de capacitación para el trabajador. Necesitamos centros de apoyo para la gente en drogas, donde se los lleve la policía.
We need, um, community centers, we need, um, centers, uh, for building, uh, job skill sets. We also need help with, um, centers for rehabilitation, uh, adelante.
Transport, exportación gratuita, hay muchas cosas, áreas verdes, sembrar árboles, abrir parques y jardines, centros de ayuda, como les dije.
Green areas, more parks, um, also adding more, uh, trees, planting more trees, there's a lot of other things.
Antemano, le recuerdo, usted los puso a la gente, la gente los puede quitar.
And I remind you, you're there because the people put you there, and you can be removed by the people.
Y trabajan para la gente.
You work for the people.
Por la gente y para la gente. ¿Qué escucho?
For the people and by the people.
Okay, solo les quiero dar las gracias, Dios los bendiga, y a la Dios sabiduría.
Uh, and I just say, thank you, God bless you, and may God give you, uh, the knowledge.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aleida Urbina. Aleida, are you on the line?
Nuestro siguiente oradora es Aleida Urbina. ¿Se encuentra en la línea, Aleida?
Uh, yes, excuse me, yes, let me get her. Good afternoon, public servants, I am a resident. And I tell you, I am sick, and I am sick, and I am exhausted, I am tired of always repeating myself to nine grown-ups, adults, who make life-changing decisions about our lives. I am here to demand that the city council stops expanding the deadliest police department as well as using that money for COVID relief funds for our community. Phoenix PD is out of control and irreformable. Rewarding and expanding the deadliest police force in the country while we're in the middle of a deadly pandemic is reckless and will lead to more black and brown people being in our neighborhoods. The department is already getting funding for 176 positions that have been vacant for years. What have they been making, you ask? No one wants to be a cop anymore. We are exposing our kids, we're exposing our future, we're exposing our present, we're exposing our little ones to the violence of police. No one grows up and no one says they want to be police. No one grows up dreaming of saving the world because we know that they're not heroes. They are scared of police. I will continue to expose my daughter, and I will continue to inform her that a, all cops are bastards. They're not here to protect us, they're not here to protect her, they're not here to take her to school, they're not here to pay her bills, they're not here to protect her. So, stop funding this department. There are over 176 vacant positions still, which goes to show, no one wants to be a damn cop, so stop funding them. And those funds should instead be used to fund free transportation, substance abuse programs, and after-school programs. Do not pass this budget if the police department is going to be expanded. Over 60 of the comments asked for reduction of police funding, 60% of comments have asked for a reduction of police funding. You need to listen to the national and local outcry. Stop, council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is-
A reminder, these are very important topics, but please use appropriate language to debate these important topics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Valdez. Patricia, are you on the line?
La siguiente oradora es Patricia Valdez. Patricia, ¿se encuentra en la línea?
Patricia is not on the line. Our next speaker is Vivian Van. Vivian, are you on the line?
Patricia no se encuentra en la línea. La siguiente oradora es Vivian Van. ¿Se encuentra en la línea, Vivian Van?
Vivian is not on the line. Our next speaker is Sonia Velazquez. Sonia, are you on the line? Sonia is not on the line. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Venable. Elizabeth, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, all I wanted to say was, I always believed that the general fund is representative of the values of the city of which it is allocated, and, uh, similarly, federal money is representative of the values of the people who, who offered it to the civilians. And, um, I think, uh, this is the money that says what the city of Phoenix's priorities really are. And unfortunately, the city of Phoenix's priorities have been for, basically, my entire lifetime, um, to support the Phoenix Police Department, and similarly, for the vast majority of my lifetime, uh, the city of Phoenix has been in the top five of the most deadly, uh, police units in the country. And so, I just don't feel like the values of liberty and equality that the city of Phoenix might claim to aspire to support, um, if it's not coming out of the general fund, it's not coming out of the city of Phoenix's pocket. You know, you may use this windfall of the federal money that has to do with, um, the COVID, but, um, if you don't change your long-term spending priorities, um, there just isn't any funding for human priorities. There just isn't any funding for human needs, and, um, I think it won't be forever that, uh, we have immense packages of aid from the federal government, and I think it needs to come from the police budget, which is disproportionate to the budgets in the area. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Javier Villegas. Javier, are you, are you on the line?
La siguiente oradora es Javier Villegas. ¿Se encuentra en la línea, Javier Villega, Villegas?
¿No se escucha?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Uh, Mario, Sonia todavía hasta aquí no habló, era otra persona quien habló en inglés.
It wasn't, it wasn't Sonia who spoke in English, it was somebody else.
So Sonia still hasn't spoken. She's still here. So Sonia still hasn't spoken, she's still here.
I'm sorry, we are calling on Javier Villegas, is he available to speak?
Estamos pidiendo a que Javier Villegas hable. ¿Está disponible Javier Villegas a que hable?
No, you all skipped Sonia, she was ready to speak but you all went to someone else and she didn't get to speak. Sonia had locked it.
Okay, Sonia Velazquez, please proceed.
Por favor de proseguir Sonia Velazquez. Buenas tardes señora, este es el intérprete hablando, solamente se le va a pedir a que por favor de hablar cada dos oraciones hacer una pausa para que pueda interpretarle. Adelante Sonia.
Yo quiero decir que cientos de personas hablaron en cuanto al crecimiento del departamento de policía.
I want to say that hundreds of people spoke against the police department.
Más del 60% de los comentarios pidieron una reducción de la financiación policial.
And over 60% requested to reduce the funding for the police.
Necesitan escuchar las protestas nacionales y locales.
You need to listen to the national and local protests.
No amplíen más este departamento, hay más de 176 puestos vacantes que se pueden utilizar en lugar de agregar 75 nuevos puestos.
There's no need to expand this department, there's over 176 vacancies, you don't need to use those funds for the 75 for the police.
En cambio, esos fondos generales pueden usarse para financiar el transporte gratuito, los programas de abuso de sustancias y los programas extracurriculares.
In exchange, these funds can be used for free transportation, rehab of drug abuse, and extracurricular activities.
No aprueben más este presupuesto, se pueden utilizar para cosas para la comunidad, en la comunidad que también ustedes viven.
Do not approve this budget, approve funds for the community, things that the community can use.
Eso es todo, muchas gracias.
That's all, thank you.
Our next speaker is Javier Villegas. Javier, are you on the line?
El siguiente orador es Javier Villegas. Javier, ¿se encuentra en la línea?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Javier Villegas.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Javier Villegas.
Si, mi, supone que no amplien este departamento, hay más de 176 puestos vacantes que se pueden utilizar.
The issue with this department is that there's 176 vacancies that can be filled.
En vez de agregar 75 puestos nuevos, en cambio, esos fondos generales deben de financiarse para transporte gratuito, programas para el abuso de drogas y sustancias.
In exchange, these general funds can be used for free transportation and for the rehab of drug abuse.
No aprueben este presupuesto si se va a ampliar el departamento de policía.
Do not approve this budget if the department, the police department is going to be expanded. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Weed. Kate, are you on the line? Kate is not on the line. Our next speaker is Stacy Whitaker. Stacy, are you on the line? Stacy is not on the line. Our next speaker is Dawn Augusta. Dawn, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and Phoenix council leaders. My name is Dawn Augusta. I am a lifelong Phoenix resident, a doctorly-prepared nurse and university professor with expertise and personal experience with loved ones in our local mental health system. I support the budget expansion to grow Phoenix Fire Crisis Response through the Community Assistance Program. It is critically important that the handoff to an appropriate contracted mental health provider utilize peer support specialists as a long-term intervention. I have witnessed firsthand the difficulty and courageous journeys that people take as they attempt to navigate our complex mental health systems. Navigating systems alone while coping with the burden of treatment associated with physical and mental illness is extremely overwhelming. It is my professional recommendation that we design the system to merely put itself out of business. We can do that by designing the proposed Community Assistance Program expansion to not only put out the fires of crisis in the community, but also prevent the revolving door phenomenon where people cycle in and out of crisis. This is likened to the rekindling of a fire. Compelling evidence supports the use of specially-trained peer support specialists to serve as a long-term relationship-based connection that can bridge the gaps in our existing system. Peer support specialists resemble the communities they serve and they are well-positioned to help people navigate effective connections to long-term services. The measures of success should not only include how many calls have been diverted from police, but also an overall decline in crisis system utilization. I support the budget expansion for the Community Assistance Program and wholeheartedly urge expert and community consultation in the expanded design, implementation, and evaluation of the program. I thank you for your service to our beloved community.
Our next speaker is Anna Maria Hernandez. Anna Maria, are you on the line?
Sí, buenas tardes.
Señora, solo le pido a que hable en secciones solamente, cada dos oraciones pause, por favor. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Anna Maria Hernandez, pertenezco a Sí Se Puede Neighborhood Association in Estrella Village, código postal 043.
Good evening, my name is Anna Maria Hernandez. I belong to Sí Se Puede Neighborhood Association in Estrella Village and my zip code is 85043.
Distrito 7.
District 7.
La población de Estrella Village está en constante crecimiento a la par, debería desarrollarse en cuanto a recursos comunitarios.
Estrella Village is constantly growing and it should also be growing in community funds.
Desafortunadamente no es así, aquí hacen falta librerías, centros comunitarios y parques donde la niñez y la juventud puedan desarrollar sus capacidades.
Unfortunately, that's not the case. We need libraries in this community, we need community centers, parks where youth and kids can go to.
Tanto físicas como intelectuales, cada persona descubre a edad temprana sus fortalezas que existen y formas productivas de utilizar el tiempo.
Both physically and intellectually, each person finds out about their strengths and their positives in their life as time goes by.
Es más probable que tenga el deseo de continuar con sus estudios y logre terminar una carrera universitaria y en consecuencia menos probable que llegue a cometer delito.
And it's most likely that they would have that desire to continue with their studies, going on to college and being successful in life while they're studying.
Por estas razones necesitamos saber si el Departamento de Parques y el Departamento de Planificación y Desarrollo de la Ciudad de Phoenix han hecho un estudio detallado a esta comunidad.
And that's the reason why we'd like to know if the Parks and Planning Department has made a study or they have developed a study in this aspect.
Y qué planes tienen de incluir los recursos antes mencionados en Estrella Village.
And what plans do you have in using these funds in the aforementioned Estrella Village?
Por otro lado, no contamos con topes, cruces peatonales bien marcados, ni medidores de velocidad en las escuelas de Fuller y Sunrise.
On the other hand, we don't have any speed bumps, any noticeable crosswalks over at Sunrise.
Nuestros estudiantes están en constante peligro ya que los automóviles practican alta velocidad en estas zonas escolares.
Our students are in high danger because the vehicles passing by are going by in such high speeds.
Les reitero mi agradecimiento por la atención prestada y en nombre de la asociación y la comunidad, reciba un cordial saludo. Mi agradecimiento por haberme dado la oportunidad de exponer una problemática que nos aqueja. Muchísimas gracias, que tenga buena tarde.
And I reiterate, I appreciate the opportunity for giving me the chance to speak on behalf of my association and community and for being able to expose or explain our aspect from our community. And I thank you very much and have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Nancy Ibarra. Nancy, are you on the line?
¿Se me escucha?
Adelante señora Nancy.
Buenas tardes miembros del consejo, gracias por permitirme hablar. Mi nombre es Nancy Ibarra.
Good afternoon, good evening, members of the council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Soy residente del distrito 7 y pertenezco a la asociación Sí Se Puede Neighborhood en Estrella Village.
Señora, ¿puede, tuvimos un problema técnico, puede repetir, por favor?
Claro. Mi nombre es Nancy Ibarra, soy residente del distrito 7.
My name is Nancy Ibarra, I'm a resident of District 7.
Pertenezco a asociación Sí Se Puede Neighborhood.
And I belong to the Sí Se Puede Neighborhood Association.
La presente petición consiste en determinar una propuesta de mejoramiento para un lote baldío ubicado en la 71 Avenida y West Pierce Street.
And I'd like to petition and propose to tend to a vacant lot that's at 71st Avenue and West Pierce.
Teniendo en cuenta que las áreas verdes urbanas en buen estado contribuyen significativamente al bienestar y buen vivir de las personas.
And it's notable that green areas and urban areas improve your lifestyle.
Los beneficios sociales de las áreas verdes están relacionados con la salud pública, seguridad y recreación.
The benefits that we acquire from this is being more social with, out in the public and the safety.
Por lo general, la importancia dada a esta área es deficiente por la poca visión e interés de las autoridades.
And in general, the attention to these areas is deficient because they lack attention.
Para mantener este espacio limpio y seguro, se pueden colocar letreros donde se especifique que está prohibido tirar basura y vigilarlo.
And to help maintain the cleanliness and safety of these areas, it would be advised that we post signs that you're not supposed to throw any trash on the ground.
Desafortunadamente, este lote está siendo utilizado para tirar todo tipo de basura.
Unfortunately, this lot is being used to dump all kinds of trash.
Vivir en él y hacer cosas ilícitas como hacer drogas.
People living there are committing illicit acts like using illicit drugs.
Nos gustaría activar este lugar y proponerlo como un espacio abierto de recreación.
And we would like to propose that this land be used for an open recreation area.
Ya que tenemos niños que se han interesado y por esto decidieron hacer trabajo comunitario, limpiando un poco.
And the fact that we have kids that have taken interest and they've dedicated their time in cleaning up and doing community service.
Para así poder aprovechar este lugar, jugar y practicar deportes.
And take advantage of this space to play and play sports on it.
Antes de que se convirtiera en un basurero, se utilizaba para jugar voleibol.
Before it was converted into a trash lot, we used to play volleyball there.
Cuando hablan de problema, no deja a los niños pasar por la banqueta y tienen que bajarse a la calle.
The kids can't even walk on the sidewalk, they have to walk on the street.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brenda Montoya. Brenda, are you on the line?
Aquí estoy. Buenas tardes, Mayor Gallego y a todos los miembros del Consilio.
Good evening to everybody and Mayor Gallego and city council members.
Mi nombre es Brenda Montoya, pertenezco a Sí Se Puede Neighborhood Association en Estrella Village, Distrito 7, código postal 85043.
My name is Brenda Montoya, I belong to the Sí Se Pueda Neighborhood Association in Estrella Village, District 7, zip code 85043.
Como asociación estamos muy interesados en todo lo que concierne al medio ambiente.
As an association, we're very interested in everything that has to do with the environment.
Estamos a la mejor disposición para apoyar todos los cambios y las iniciativas que se propongan para combatir el calentamiento global.
And we're very willing to participate in everything that has to do with improving the environment and all the initiatives that have to do with it.
Como consecuencia mitigar el cambio climático.
And as a consequence mitigating the climate change.
Por lo tanto, apoyamos la idea de introducir el transporte eléctrico como una manera modificada de contribuir a un clima saludable y ecológico.
And that's why we like to promote the idea of electric transportation that would lead to healthier lives.
Los automóviles eléctricos son muy buena opción para quienes tienen la capacidad de adquirirlos.
Electric vehicles are a very good option for those who have the opportunity to acquire them.
Pero estamos conscientes que estos son bastante caros.
But we are aware that these are very expensive.
Por lo tanto, no están al alcance de la mayoría.
Therefore, they're not so easily accessible for the majority of us.
Como solución proponemos que simplemente autobuses eléctricos.
As a solution, we propose that you implement electric buses.
Tan para las escuelas como para el transporte público.
Both for schools and also for public transport. Both for schools and also for public transportation.
Por último, estamos pidiendo un circulador propio.
And lastly, we are asking for our own circulator.
Para satisfacer las necesidades de los residentes en Estrella Village.
That way, we can satisfy the needs to the residents of Estrella Village.
Muchas gracias y buenas tardes. Esperamos que nos tomen en cuenta.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, and we hope that you take us into consideration.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Payan. Elizabeth, are you on the line?
Siguiente orador es Elizabeth Payan. Se encuentra en la línea Elizabeth Payan.
Elizabeth is not on the line. Our next speaker is Elida Urias. Elida, are you on the line? Elida, are you on the line? We don't have any audio for Elida. Our next speaker is Paula Valencia. Paula, are you on the line? Paula, are you on the line? We do not have any audio for Paula. Mayor Paula was our final registered speaker for this item.
Wonderful. Thank you to everyone who participated. I will now turn to the council for comments, questions, or a motion.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 per the staff recommendation. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember, comments or questions? Vice Mayor.
Mayor, and thank you to all the folks that came out today to speak. I know we've had a lot of budget hearings and then to still see a lot of folks have the energy to come and speak today. I want to appreciate all the comments that were made. There's some really good things in this budget. Really excited for the Climate Office, the cap program. I believe is a good way forward. I do think some of the no cap coalition suggestions are things we need to look at. I think something that's become clear is the safest communities have more resources, not necessarily more police. And so I feel moving forward with these resources, especially with mental health and substance abuse is something that's going to be very positive for our community. I do know that sometimes good intentions can go sideways. And so I want to make sure that when we're talking about the cap program, that we are diligent about its implementation and the inclusion of people that are impacted by what's been happening with the police department. I support some sort of creation of a community slash provider steering committee that assures that those voices are put forth when this program moves forward. I also would, I don't know what your plans are, Mayor, but I would also appreciate a work study or policy session so we can dive in. I think having heard from our current cap program, there's a lot of stories there from when it was established that I don't think many of us even understood. Along with, I think some folks today spoke of other cities such as Eugene or cities in Colorado and other places that have done similar type programs. So it'd be good to hear from them. I am really, again, really excited this is happening. Really excited that we were able to push for the wage increases this year. And so overall with the budget, I think we're moving in a really good direction. I would or I want to request from the folks that made the motion if I could add a friendly amendment. That amendment would be requesting to move all the 75 proposed civilian police department positions to be created from current vacancies within the police department rather than funding for new positions. I'd also like to direct the total number that would be saved, which is around $3.2 million for these positions to go half towards our Phoenix After School Care, our PAC program, inside our Parks Department, and for the other half to go to public transit specifically to add more dollars to the proposed bus card subsidy program outlined in the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, proposed in the strategic plan. I know Councilman Guardado or who the second were, are you all okay with that amendment?
Vice Mayor, I go to our city attorney and just ask, should that be a substitute or a amendment?
Mayor, I believe that could be a friendly amendment. It's just a minor adjustment to the overall budget.
Wonderful. All right. Councilman Guardado, does that work for you?
Yeah, I mean, I guess first I would like to ask, I don't know if this is Jeff or if it's Ed. If we did this, how many vacant positions would then, would there be available?
Councilman Guardado, just to clarify, are you asking how many police positions it would take to do that?
Right. And then how many would be left over?
I'm assuming we're talking about the difference between the 3,125 authorized and funded police positions and the current filled number, which is at 2,934. Am I correct in that?
Yes, because how many unfilled positions do we have?
So the difference between 3125 and 2934, which is 191. It's important to understand about those positions, however. First of all, the council has authorized 3125 as a funded goal probably for the last eight years. I think it's been a policy, Jeff's telling me five years, it's been a policy of the council to strive towards a 3,125. And so we have those funded both through the general fund and through the special revenue funds that were passed by the voters or imposed on, they were all passed by the voters. So that number of 3125 has been a council target. We have gotten as close as 3,050 in the last year, but we have, as you can tell, going from 3,050 to 2,934, we've been steadily losing filled positions through attrition. If you, I think Jeff told me that it's about 30 positions, 30 police positions would need to be defunded or eliminated from the budget, and then that would equal the 3.2 million. If you also intended to remove the $500,000 proposed for the police for ongoing studies, that would be another four positions. So we're talking about 35 police positions would be equivalent to the amount of funds that the vice mayor's motion would suggest.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, so with that being said, yeah, I would, we could, I'm okay with the amendment.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I believe you were the second. Councilwoman, do you accept the friendly amendment? And sorry.
I also have a clarification question from Ed. In, you know, next year, you know, if you were ultimately able to find folks to fill those positions, could you hire those positions next year if suddenly there's a lot of interest and folks want to apply to the police department?
Councilwoman Ansari, Mayor Gallego, the answer would be no, because you would have taken the funding for those positions and moved it to other positions. So in effect, the council's goal, the council's target would go from 3125 to approximately 3,090, give or take. We'd have to run the exact math on that. So you'd have a funded position target and you'd have funded 3,090 positions rather than 3,125. So were we to, that would be the cap that we could go to would be 3,090.
Okay, but you could always increase the cap in the future.
I couldn't do that, but the city council would have to vote to increase that cap and identify new funding to replace that money for those positions.
Okay, got it.
We will be going O'Brien, Stark, DeCiccio, and I know everyone will want to weigh in on this. Ann O'Brien, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Garcia, you, I didn't understand or catch the first number you said. You're talking about moving 35 positions or 75 positions?
So there was, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, 22 positions were already moved, which left us with 53 positions. So essentially, what I'm asking is that the remainder, which is 53 positions, also come from the vacancies that already exist. So making sure that all 75 positions are actually taken from vacancies that already exist.
Vice Mayor and Councilwoman O'Brien, Mayor Gallego, that's correct. There are 22 positions that are going to be converted at no cost because of how the funding works in the central booking area. So you'd really be replacing, you'd be paying for 53 civilian positions by basically eliminating 35 sworn police officer positions. And the reason why there's that mismatch is because police officers are more expensive because their pensions are a lot more expensive and generally they're higher paid than many of the civilian positions that are proposed in the budget. So you would be, and again, 35 is an estimate. Jeff and Amber will have to actually run it. But our best understanding is that's about the number you would have to do between to take funding for the for the equivalent of the 75 positions plus the $500,000 funding for studies to fund those 75 positions by using police vacancies rather than adding in the budget as we have proposed.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Mayor, did Councilwoman Ansari agree to the friendly amendment?
I, Councilwoman, I did not hear.
Uh, yes.
Okay, and Ed, thank you for that explanation on that. I'm done for now, Mayor.
Wonderful. We go to Councilwoman Stark, followed by Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly support this budget, but I do not support the friendly amendment. Crime is at an all-time high. I read in an article recently that of the 60 largest cities in America, there has been a spike, 33% in homicides. I think we need to be aggressive about recruiting and getting officers. I'm just sorry, I can't do this. I think it sends the wrong message. I think people are concerned about public safety. Again, I'll support the budget, but not the amendment. Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio, followed by Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. And just more of a question to Chris. And Chris, can we separate parts of the budget? Can I say, I mean, if I wanted to make a motion right now to support the police budget in its entirety listed in the budget, can I do that, make a separate motion to do that?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, if I understand what you're saying, no, I don't believe you could do that. The budget is before us as a whole.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the budget is before us as a whole item. I don't believe you can separate it out.
I thought we could. But we can't do that. Well, you know, I think this is a mistake. At the end of the day, just for the individuals that wanted to fund the police, I get it. I mean, you're trying to follow the national trend. It's all part of this police hate that we're watching across the nation right now. This is not about asking for accountability or transparency or anything else. It's like a literal hate of the police. And we're starting to see that now here in the city of Phoenix. We can always use nice language and say it's going to be, you know, we really like them, but we're going to take the money out of there. No, this is all about police hate. We heard the speakers speak. That's what this is about. The media is just full of it. Quite frankly, they don't even print this stuff. They don't even write about it. That's why I don't even talk to half of them because they don't even write what's happening in real time. They don't talk about it in real time. But the defund the police movement is a real deal here in the city of Phoenix, and the public better be aware. They better get off their couch and start realizing what's really going on in the city. The majority of the community, the community that we all serve, is about 1.7 million people. 1.7 million people support the police. We have 100 people that don't. So 100, 1.7 million versus 100 people that don't support the police. That's what you have here. It's not tens of thousands, it's 100 people. That's about it. People that work have a hard time coming to our meetings. I get it, but this will at least get their attention today. So at the end of the day, if I have to vote for the budget, I will. You know, as much as I don't want to, in order to protect the police, I will do that. I will not vote for it today. We have, I think, two more votes, don't we, Ed, on this thing?
Councilman DeCiccio, yes, there's a tentative, state-required tentative adoption on June 2nd and then the final adoption on June 16th.
I will do that to protect the police. I will get us the five votes we need to have to protect the police. So I will not vote for this first motion, and I'll vote for it at the end, Mayor, if you give me the opportunity. If we need me as a fifth vote, I will do that. I don't like this budget at all. I think it's full of pork. It's full of things that I just really don't support. I just don't think it's fiscally accountable. But I will do that in order to protect the police and stop this debate that we're having right now. So if they need me for the fifth vote, I will be there for that. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
We'll go to Councilman Guardado, then Councilwoman Ansari, then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I agree with Councilwoman Stark. Like I hear, you know, what folks say and the need out there for more police officers. I know that we've seen the need of hiring more folks in all of these different departments. I know that Chief Williams and I have been in many conversations where we're talking about maybe doing a job fair so we can hire more 911 operators. I think it's been a little bit of a trend since I came into office on how many, how much we need to fill a lot of these positions. I know, Ed, you and I have been in these conversations for a very long time, and I think it's important that we fill these positions and that we figure out a way, how do we get people in the door? But I do struggle, I do struggle with the fact, you know, that, you know, I was at a meeting this past week and 270,000 women are no longer working. So I also see the need where we need to fund the PAC program, where we need to do things where we're going to get our kids, you know, in a safe environment. So I struggle, I struggle a lot, as much as I support making sure that we have enough staffing in all of our departments. I struggle with having money in the budget that's just sitting there when we have so many children and we have so many families that are struggling with childcare. And to me, that's as a mom, as a young mom that continues to struggle with that, I, you know, I find it very, very difficult for me. That's what I'm thinking about when, you know, when I'm thinking about this budget, how is it that we can put our budget to work in a way where we can get these 270,000 women in Maricopa County that are not working back on a job, back out in the workforce? And if there's a way where we can use some of this money that's just sitting there to be able to get folks back to work, to be able to get kids safety for childcare, like to me, that's also incredibly important. I mean, we're coming out of this pandemic. We're coming out on the other side. It's, you know, like it's been an awful year for our children. It's been an awful year. year for our families, but just, you know, we, we, and we see it every day. We see all these families and we hear the cry also from the hospitality industry, from the restaurant industry, where they're not able to hire workers. And I know part of that issue is that, you know, folks don't have where to leave their children, and, and it's a lot easier to stay home with them than to have to pay, you know, one thousand, two thousand dollars a month to get their, to get their kids affordable childcare. So for me, this is, this is what this is about. Like I'm, I'm committed to making sure that all the departments are funded, I'm committed to figuring out those solutions. Like I said, I've been talking to a lot of the department heads on how do we do job fairs and how do we fill these positions? But right now, like, there is a huge, I, I feel there's a huge urgency just from the numbers that we're seeing and just from, from the cry that we're hearing about, you know, we have restaurants at the airport that are not opened up because they cannot, they cannot get the cooks to come back to work. And, and I'm, and I'm almost, you know, I'm very certain that it has to do with the fact that they don't have childcare for their children. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm committed to all the different departments, I'm committed to making this work, and, and I think everyone here knows that I'm not nervous or scared to roll up my sleeves and get to work and making sure that, that we fund all of our different departments and that we fill these positions that, that are in very huge need. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, yeah, I would say yes. You have been very diligent in working with us on filling positions and have had good ideas about how to, especially with our nine-one-one operators, so thank you. I do just want to clarify that it is not, and it was said by some of the, the speakers, the money is not just sitting there. What happens is we have policing needs for, we have a, a goal of thirty-one hundred and twenty-five. When we have twenty-nine hundred and forty officers, what we have to do to, to meet the need of policing in the city is to increase the overtime of the existing officers to meet the minimum staffing that's required. So the funding, instead of, of paying filled positions because we can't find enough people to be police officers, we have used it for overtime, and then we've also used it to be able to replace police vehicles because we fell significantly behind in replacing police vehicles in the last decade. So the money is being used to fill needs in the police department in the city, it hasn't just been accumulating. So I just wanted to clarify.
Councilwoman Ansari, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify my position as well and just explain why I would be supporting this friendly amendment. Completely understand, like Councilwoman Stark said and Councilwoman Guardado echoed, I also agree ultimately, we do, we are under policed, and I think that the three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sworn positions are important, but at the same time, while the money's not sitting there, and I completely understand that, Ed, when there's hundreds of vacancies and that, I understand that's been a problem for years now, and currently there's only four people in the police academy, it also just doesn't make sense when we're hearing, you know, calls after calls about just simply not expanding the current police budget, not defunding, but just not expanding and listening to the community and focusing on accountability and transparency. And the fact that we could come back next year and we could vote again to go back to the three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sworn officers makes me even more comfortable just thinking, why not use this now? It's more fiscally responsible if the positions are just vacant and, you know, focus on showing that we are listening to the community that is calling for this. And again, things like, you know, the proposals of how the money would be spent, more after school programs, free public transportation, these are long-term solutions that reduce crime, having safe spaces for kids to go after school, having transportation and not needing police officers, and then the fact that we do have cap coming in, and this incredible fifteen million dollar investment, the largest investment of any city in the entire United States, will hopefully also help to reduce the need for police. But just want to say, I see this as just a temporary solution, given the fact that even since I've been here a very short time, I've been told these positions have been vacant for many years, and it's so hard to recruit, and we should fix that, but let's work this year to figure out how we're going to fix that and then come back next year with a different budget. That's it.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding, we still have a hundred and forty-one positions left over in the police department for overtime use or, or whatever other needs they will have. And, and, and I heard Councilwoman Stark, and believe me, that violence is felt in our communities. In district eight, in the neighborhood neighboring, you know, a couple streets down, we've had about five killings in the last, in the last year, and it's been tough. Jamaican restaurant down the street had someone killed, and we've had youth being killed. And what I'm asking you is to try something different, to try to see if an after-school program, a, a bus card to get someone to a job or a community center might save their life as well. And that not only sending a police officer to arrest someone or search them or criminalize them is the only answer. We're literally talking about thirty-five positions that haven't been filled since 2018, and we're still allowing a hundred and forty-one positions to remain there. It's not like we're, we're, again, it's, we're not doing something drastic. We're literally using mon, we're allowing the police budget to remain and use their own money, they don't need more. And, and, and I think we've, time and time again, have believed that more police equals safety, and it doesn't. And let me tell you the difference between parts of my district and some of y'all's district, it's not that there's more police, it's that there's more resources. And through the pandemic, it's been more evident than ever that our communities were hurting before, but they're hurting more now than ever. And so I think it's, it's important for us to try something different, to literally attempt to see i- if we could get some folks to, to go to these community centers, if we can get folks to, to apply for another job because now they have an opportunity in transportation, to make sure that the, the city is cleaner because more folks are on public transportation than they are in their vehicles. My understanding is the police department doesn't zero out their budget. I think tomorrow we have, the, it's, and it happened last year, as the year is ending, we start getting requests, like the one of the ones we have tomorrow, which is like seventeen thousand dollars to retrain the officers on how to get into homes. And you start seeing the police department wanting to spend this money, that's fine. Let's use that money that's already in the police department to have better reporting, to have the needs that, that we're seeing are, are needed right now by adding more money. But it does not make sense to add more money when the money's already sitting there, and that's simply what this amendment's trying to do. I do believe there's still plenty of positions, a hundred and forty-one of them, that are gonna allow the police department to have that flexibility, and we're talking about converting thirty-five empty slots with no one in them to over fifty positions now that are actually going to service and allow the police department to be of better use. So I really hope, like I said, the, the rest of the budget is amazing. I couldn't see myself or bring myself to make a decision to add more money to the police department, not only because of the issues we've seen, but because it doesn't make fiscal sense. And so I think along with this, along with the cap program, hopefully we get that done in the right way with community input. We're voting on no tomorrow. There is, I could see where we can get to a position of, of recreating that trust, of making sure that this relationship that's been broken, that we've seen in the streets, doesn't continue. And so I really, I'm asking my colleagues, this is a, a three million dollar difference that will go a long way to making sure we can reestablish that trust. Thank you all.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I know our next item has to do with the American Rescue Plan, and I think there's probably some monies in there that are available to address some of the issues that you're bringing up. I voted to keep the three million dollars in the office, even though we didn't have an office, we didn't have a director, because you wanted to make a statement that it's important. So I think it's important that we recruit and hire officers. I cannot support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado.
Yeah, and I, and I just want to restate that I will, I will continue to work diligently with Ed, with the chief, with Jeff, and I, and I know a lot of my colleagues are also committed to this, to figuring out how do we, how do we fill all of those empty, empty seats that we have, you know, with, with our nine-one-one operators and even, and even in our police department. Like I, you know, like given, given my background, I definitely am not a big fan of having under, understaffed departments, because when we have understaffed departments, then we are not giving the service that our constituents need. So I, I'm committed, I'm, I'm committed to continuing to doing that and, and working with everyone around the table to making sure that we, you know, that, that we have a city that's thriving and that we're able to serve all of our constituents in the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments from the council?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Hi. I think one of the things that we also have to consider is that we will be having additional funding, especially from the cannabis, the marijuana, and, and we will determine how that goes. I believe that that, or the conversation, we have a new council, but the conversation in the past was putting it towards the pension, but we have a new council and there may be different ideas. I also want to ask, Ed, that how long have these positions been vacant? Because they've been vacant for quite some time, and I want to say about three years.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor and Mayor. Yes, the, the council target of thirty-one twenty-five was set about five years ago. We have not been at thirty-one twenty-five, Amber, since when?
Councilwoman Pastor, Mayor, members of the council, it's been quite some time. If we go back in terms of the filled police count, I would have to go back to, all the way to two thousand nine-ten. We are at roughly three thousand one hundred and sixty-three filled.
So, and just to add to that, so what happened was in two thousand nine-ten, when the recession hit, we were at about that number, and the tax revenues of the city declined for the first time in our history, actually declined in real number, and the tax revenue for the voter-approved special funds declined even more. And so the council approved a policy which was to freeze all police hiring in order to avoid laying off police officers. We let the number fall through attrition, and we actually got to a low in about twenty-fourteen or so, twenty-fifteen, of around twenty-seven hundred and fifty, if I remember correctly. Then at that point, when we had balanced all of our specialty funds, which had gone into a deficit, they were balanced and we could start hiring officers again. At that point, the council set the target at a sustainable number of hires, at that point was three thousand one hundred and twenty-five. So we've been trying to get to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five since we hit our low point of twenty-seven hundred and some. We got to a high point about a year ago of three thousand and fifty-one, and since that time, we have again been declining because attrition, retirements or departures have outpaced recruitment. So we, we got, we were, we're trying every year to get to thirty-one twenty-five, we, we weren't able to do that. We got as close as thirty, thirty-three thousand fifty-one, we're now at about twenty-nine forty-three. And so the council certainly has the authority to change that number and move those funds. That is absolutely within the council's authority. What it would mean would be that our target would, would shift downward when we moved that money to, as, as the motion is presented. So I'm sorry for the, I just wanted to give you the context of, of where we've been over the past twelve years in terms of that number.
So Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Okay. So like you just stated, it's shifting funds, and it's shifting funds to other positions. And so right now, we have a need for that, and that's the need. We also have the need for police officers, but these, these positions have been vacant. I heard we haven't been to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five since two oh nine and have been vacant for quite some time. And right now, there's a need. I believe that when we get, when we fill those hundred positions, then we will also be committed, or I'm committed, to put the other seventy-five positions to fill that three thousand and one hundred and twenty-five positions. But as of right now, there, there, there is a need to fill fifty-five.
Mayor.
We'll go to, I guess, Ann O'Brien and then Councilman DeCecio.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just like to state that I do not support this friendly amendment. When I surveyed the District One residents, a more, a majority of them consider public safety to be their number one priority. There is definitely a silent majority out there who value public safety, who want quicker response times from the public safety personnel, and who simply want to feel safe within their neighborhoods. Not silent majority is in my district, but I strongly believe that the silent majority is also throughout Phoenix. They support police and fire and the services they provide. The discussion around those vacancies, while the positions might not actually have a person in it, those dollars associated with those vacancies are still being used to pay our officers who are woefully under-resourced to, to meet the needs of the citizens of the city of Phoenix. And I understand that we also have other needs and we do have funds, and I'm willing to discuss those needs with the ARPA funds. However, this is not the time, considering that just approximately a year ago, according to Ed, we were as high as three thousand and fifty-one police officers. However, here we are at twenty-nine hundred and forty-three, and every month, according to the data I've seen, we are losing nine to ten officers more than we are hiring, which means we're losing approximately a hundred and twenty officers a year. This is not the time to take away positions or resources from the Phoenix Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilman DeCecio.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So if this motion does pass, we're going to see a hell of a lot more vacancies than we see right now. You're going to see a lot more police officers resigning. Their morale is really low because of all these attacks on them. We've heard them called rapists, murderers. We've heard them called every name on the book, and very few people are defending these guys, working so hard. These men and women that are out there working every single day to protect us, doing the best job that they can. If people don't want police in their neighborhood, send them to my district. I would accept all the police officers. If you want to send all two thousand nine hundred to my district, I will take them all. My district loves the police. We accept the fact that, you know, there are problems, that we do believe in oversight, but at the end of the day, we need more police officers. We are five hundred police officers short, not thirty-one twenty-five or twenty, thirty-one ninety or whatever number we, we're talking about, thirty-one twenty-five, I think, Ed, is what we discussed. So at the end of the day, the police department is already underfunded. We're already having a hard time reaching the calls that we have out there. Priority three calls, you might as well forget about it because that's just not going to happen in probably a day or two or maybe even a lifetime anymore. So if this motion passes to defund the police, we are going to see major chaos in the city of Phoenix. You're, you're going to see more murders in the city of Phoenix, you're going to see more crime occurring, more burglaries, more robberies. You're going to start seeing a major uptick in crime that we've already started to see. The reason we're short with police right now is who'd want, who in the hell would want to work in our police department with all these constant attacks on them? Who in the hell would do this? Anyone in their right mind would say, I do not want to be a police officer in the city of Phoenix. I'd rather go to Gilbert, I'd rather go to Queen Creek, I'd rather go to Glendale or Peoria where they value police officers and the work that they do. Right now, they are not getting it from the political team, and they're not getting it from upper staff, they're not getting it across the board. They're allowing these attacks, we are allowing these attacks on the police officers, driving down morale, we are making it very difficult for these police officers to do- We are making it very difficult for these police officers to do their job. Every time they turn around, they are being attacked every single time. So this is not going to just go away. The defund the police movement is real here in the city of Phoenix, and we're seeing it today in real time. And like I said, I will vote no on the budget, but if it takes, uh, it takes me to be the fifth vote to protect those that protect us in the police department, I will do that. And it also allows staff to realize that they don't have to be extorted for another thing, that they have to give something away. If they get their five votes with me, that means nothing else is going to happen. Nothing bad's going to happen this year, and I'm happy to do that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Anne, sorry.
Um, I just want to reiterate from my perspective that, again, this is not about not supporting the police. This is not about, these positions, these seventy-five new positions are going within the police department. There's civilian positions in the police department. It's simply looking at vacancies that have been sitting there for years and using the money more effectively at this moment in time for positions that are going in the police department and that will help make our police department stronger. Um, yeah, again, it just, it's not, I just think there's been a lot of language. It's not really accurately describing what the situation is. As Councilwoman Pastor said, you know, we can, it sounds like many of us are committed to reaching that three thousand one hundred and twenty-five number, um, but we are not doing so right now. We haven't done so in many years, and maybe it'll take a lot of us sitting down together and coming out, coming up with a proactive plan to actually recruit, so that we don't only have four people in the police academy. But there's definitely not going to be more crime, because it's not going to affect the number of police officers that are currently on the streets of Phoenix, working. Um, and again, it's, you know, I'm happy that the police officers received a raise before I started, and they've agreed to more transparency measures, and that's great. So hopefully that will help with morale. Um, but these are just some long-term solutions and just really looking at the moment and saying, what is the most effective use of our funds? Um, in this time, when there are so many people struggling, we should be looking at ways to support people, um, above everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Anne Sari?
Yes.
DeCecio?
No.
Guardado?
Yeah, yes.
O'Brien?
No.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gallego?
No.
Mayor, that motion fails five to four.
Mayor?
Mayor. Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Stark?
Could I make a motion to approve the budget as recommended by city staff? Thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor, Mayor?
Councilman, uh, DeCecio, I guess if you want to explain your vote?
Yeah, just, oh, yeah, go ahead. Do, you could, uh, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
I, I think we do have, uh, a little urgency in this vote, and then we could have, I, I will reopen for discussion of the budget after.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I, I will vote no at first, but at the very end, Mayor, if you allow me, I'll switch my vote before the vote, uh, count is over in order to make sure it passes, if this vote fails. Thank you, Mayor.
Anne Sari?
Yes.
DeCecio?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
I'd like to explain my vote, Mayor.
Please do.
So there are things in this budget that I, I simply can't support. The O talked about before, that's three million dollars. You know, we've got stuff going back that I've been talking about in my years on the council. You know, we're spending one point three million basically on lobbyists. Uh, now we're doing four hundred and seventy-five thousand for, for the climate, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on medical, which we weren't doing before. This money could be better deployed recruiting police officers. We had that discussion several years ago. We had to go out of state to try to recruit, and the situation has become demonstrably worse. I do think, overall, the public at large, I'm not claiming every single person in the public, not all one point seven, seven million Phoenicians, but I think if you ask them, what's the basic thing that po- that the cities do, it's going to be police and fire, probably followed pretty closely by streets, parks, and libraries. And instead, we're diverting money to this other stuff, which may have some merit, but it is not a core function. We got through a lot of years without it, and now we're having trouble filling positions in our core function. I mean, any younger person who watches any of our meetings, why would they want to be a police officer after listening to this, to see how they're treated by the people who come to our meetings? That is not everybody. So I, I just think, at this point, the budget is also a policy document that indicates the values of the city leadership, and to me, this budget doesn't do it. Um, I, I think it sends a message to possible police recruits. I think it sends a message to the public that is not accurate, and, uh, and certainly shouldn't be accurate. And it's a much different conversation than the conversation we've had, you know, even a couple short years ago. The tenor of this has changed completely. It's, it's dispiriting to listen to. I can't even imagine what I'd think if I was an officer. And frankly, now it seems like, like fire's kind of gotten sucked into it, too. Um, I, I'm going to vote no, and, uh, I just wanted to highlight a couple of reasons why. Um, but this discussion has been fascinating, and I don't think we can claim we're going to take police positions away, or sweep some of the money and maybe put it back later, and say we're still supportive of police. That, that doesn't sound logical to me at all. Thank you, Mayor. I vote no.
Garcia?
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, really excited about, uh, a lot of things in this budget. CAP program, consultant for public health, a lot of things are, are going in the right direction, and I do think it's looking more like a values-based, uh, document. I do think we have a lot of work to do. Um, I cannot bring myself to continue to fund this police department, um, when it already has, it's already the biggest part of our budget. Um, it's a negotiation, again, with the MOU that happens without community input. I hope we could look into changing that. The biggest line item in our entire budget, um, does not have community input. And once again, going against not just national trends, but common sense, we have decided to even further fund this police department. Um, really excited for the folks on some amount of the way, really excited for some of the projects that are going to happen thanks to this budget. Um, it, it looks like the, the budget's got the numbers, but again, I really do hope that, um, through what's going to happen with office accountability, through the CAP program, we continue to take this issue serious and understand that the safest communities are those that are resourced, not those that are policed. And so with that, I vote no.
Gallego?
I vote yes. This is an exciting budget that invests in our community. It will have more investment in our city staff who are working so hard. It will invest in small business navigators, helping our veterans, affordable housing, so many of our community needs. I am looking forward to seeing more of those CAP shirts out in the community. This is the largest new program during my time as an elected official, and it is an exciting investment in behavioral health and a smarter Phoenix. I'm excited to support this budget.
And Mayor, that motion passes six to three.
Thank you. Uh, council member comments on the budget? We'll begin with Councilwoman Pastor.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. I just wanted just to say that, uh, I have to drop off. Um, I think the community needs to know, uh, that I'm trying to keep up with all my responsibilities, and my son is, is playing at seven o'clock in the state, uh, championship, baseball championship, and, uh, I am going to go do mom duties, uh, with ARPA. I just want to say that I think, uh, a majority of the money should go to the community, and, uh, thank you for understanding.
Thank you, and good luck to your son, and congratulations on how far they have come. Such an exciting night. Chiramanda victory. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also just wanted to thank everyone. I think this is a very robust, um, budget that we have here today. I want to share a few of my thoughts on, on the budget, um, which I'm very excited about. First, I am glad to see the investments in West and South Phoenix. I think it shows this council's commitment to equity and building up historically neglected neighborhoods. Particularly, I strongly believe that our families deserve clean and safe places for their kids to play, and I am glad to see our parks be such a priority in this budget. Next, I want to acknowledge the raises and bonuses this budget has for our city employees. I want to thank our labor unions and leader, and leadership for nego- negotiating in good faith and reaching contracts that I believe are fair. So many of our city employees have been on the front lines of this pandemic, and I am happy to see them getting the pay and the benefits that they deserve. I especially want to highlight the new positions that will be created by this budget in the nine-one-one call centers. We have worked hard to improve the pay and the working conditions for our nine-one-one operators. The wage increases we brought forward earlier this year help reward employees for the incredible hard work they do. This budget will now address the chronic short staffing those operators have been working under. Having new nine-one-one operators, operators is critical, both for our residents and for our staff, and I am glad to see this budget address this issue. Lastly, I am grateful to see the creation of more robust and responsive community assistance program. I am supportive of the efforts to rethink our response to the behavioral mental health crisis. We need to increase our capacity and to provide care for our most vulnerable residents. I know in this coming year, I will continue working with my colleagues and staff on reimagining the services we provide to our residents. One such conversation I will continue moving in is the creation of the Office of Public Health that can help us to find new ways to address homelessness, find solutions surrounding mental health, and help to strengthen the well-being of our city all around. So again, incredibly excited. I am very proud of this budget, and thank you to everyone that worked really hard, um, to putting this together. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Anne Sari?
Thank you so much. Um, I also just want to say that, um, overall, I think this budget is really, really exciting, and, um, we're making so much progress with, um, the surplus that we have. The few things that I'm really excited about, first and foremost, is the Office of Climate Change and Heat Mitigation. This is a huge, huge deal for the city of Phoenix, um, where we know extreme heat is threatening so many, all of us, but really our most vulnerable community members. Um, I understand we're going to have the country's first chief heat officer, um, that will really be able to make sure that, um, all of our residents are ready, um, as temperatures get hotter every year. So I'm really excited about that. For District Seven, uh, we have two new parks. That's also huge. One of these parks, uh, families have been waiting for twenty years for. So I really appreciate, um, that city staff was able to make sure that these parks are part of this year's budget. Um, I'm extremely excited about CAP, again, another groundbreaking, um, investment, the city, the country's largest investment, um, in alternative responses to policing. Um, and I think having social workers respond to mental health crises, um, will be a big deal. I know it's going to take a couple of years to really get it off the ground and fully implement everything, but, um, I think that ultimately that's going to help, uh, with some of the issues that we have, um, with policing. As Councilwoman Guardado said, um, it's wonderful, uh, to see that so many of our city employees who work so, so hard, especially during, um, this unprecedented global pandemic, received, um, pay raises, um, and that, I hope, will help all of them. And then finally, some of the, the new additions, like the Affordable Housing Manager and those who will be responsible for implementing, um, the housing plan that you all passed last year, um, it's, it's really great. So, um, all in all, I think this is a really exciting budget, and with ARPA on top of that, which we'll discuss next, um, I hope that we can do, uh, great things for people in our community. So thanks to everyone who worked so hard to make it happen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Anne Sari. Any final comments on the budget? Appreciate the work in passing this budget. Uh, we have one agenda remi- item remaining. We will take a twenty-minute recess. It is now approximately seven PM. We will return at seven-twenty PM for our final agenda item. Thank you all. Welcome back to the policy meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will reconvene and go to item number two, American Rescue Plan Proposed Strategic Plan. I will turn to our city leadership to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as you noted in the previous item, this is really a companion to the budget in that it allows resources to do some important community needs. So earlier this year, the federal government announced an American Rescue Plan Act, which we're going to call ARPA, uh, for local governments. Phoenix will receive three hundred and ninety-six million dollars, we learned last week, uh, in ARPA funding, and that is broken out into two payments of a hundred and ninety-eight million dollar each over the next two years. Based on the suc- successful strategic plan for the last year's coronavirus relief funds, and the city council discussion that we had last month, we have identified multiple ways to make transformational investments of ARPA funds to make a significant impact on the community, as you requested, and to improve some city operations for the long term. Of course, all this is subject to the council's final decision, and what you'll see today is a suggestion that's designed to get the conversation started for you, um, and we'll take your feedback on that. So the presentation we're going to see from Jeff Barton, our Assistant City Manager, will detail potential programs that build from your comments on last month's work-study and the experience of the past year, and some suggestions from staff based on federal guidance. And it's a, as I said, it's a suggestion to start the dialogue. Uh, last year, or last month, we came talking about the whole approximately four hundred million dollars, and the council asked to have the dialogue really focus on the first half of the funding more. I think it's important, though, to take a step back and think about the overall numbers. And so Jeff's going to walk you through an overall percentage allocation, which you'll see is suggested to be seventy-five, seventy percent for the community, twenty-five percent for city operations that support the community, and five percent for reserve for the council to be able to be flexible among those things. With that, I'm going to try to move forward. There we go. The, the ARPA is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity. It's not every year that you get a, a, uh, allocation of four hundred million dollars to do important things. It is one-time funds, though, although it's spread out over four years, so it feels in some ways like ongoing funds. It is going to come to an end, so we want to always keep that in mind. And it allows for transformational investments in council priorities. The, uh, one we want to talk through is some lessons we learned from the coronavirus relief funds last year, and one, one thing we learned clearly was that the council's overall strategic plan made a difference in keeping us on target and focused. And so that was a really good approach the council took last year. We also learned that it takes time to make these big investments happen. We all want them to happen immediately, but to get these programs going takes, takes time. Uh, we don't want to max, we don't want to make it a long time, but it does take some time to get them going. And it also, it takes people to, to implement them. We have to have the right people and the right number of people doing that, whether it's city employees, or in many cases, it is external contractors. We have to factor in that we have to have the right, uh, right folks to do it. One of the things that happened last time, almost exactly a year ago today, on May the fifth of two thousand and twenty, the council adopted some, uh, considered some guiding principles that we used in putting together the coronavirus relief funds, and I think they really informed the ARPA. First, it was that council wanted to fund programs that reduce the economic burden, uh, on residents and businesses from the impacts of COVID. Also, to identify opportunities for ongoing improvements that will benefit the community and the city organization, so things that will make a lasting difference. Third, to consider one-time investments that avoid ongoing obligations to the general fund as much as possible, because eventually, if that's the case, the city would have to have the money to do those on an ongoing basis. Uh, fourth, to use existing processes whenever possible to reduce that time burden that I said earlier, to, to make things expedited. So using, wherever we can, using existing programs and, and processes, uh, if, if time is of the essence. And finally, we always wanted to be mindful that we had to be transparent in our approach and do things that followed the guidance, because inevitably, there will be federal audits of this program. As we think about additional things to add to those guiding principles, I think building on the successful experience I think building on the successful experience of last year's plan, which you talked about at April 27th, and you also talked a lot at April 27th about making sure we avoid duplicating other COVID funding sources at the city, for example, we had COVID CDBG, and other governmental programs. So we know that Maricopa County has an allocation of $850 million. We know the state of Arizona has an allocation of, I believe, over $4 billion. And so we don't want to duplicate those programs. We want to collaborate with those as best as we can. And then providing adequate staffing to successfully implement new or expanded programs. With that, I'm going to turn it to our Assistant City Manager, Jeff Barton, to walk through as these principles inform the discussion, and so I'll turn it to Jeff.
Thank you, Ed, Mayor, members of the council. What we're going to do is take a few moments and walk you through what we know about the American Rescue Plan Act, specifically the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. We'll stick with ARPA, because that's a lot easier acronym than CSLFRF. So we'll stick with ARPA for now. We know that the revised award is approximately $396 million. That is down from what we initially were estimating, about $416. We know that those funds, as the city manager mentioned, are expected to be distributed in two separate allocations of $198 million. The first allocation is expected any day now, and then the second one would be one year from the date in which we received the first allocation. The eligible funding period, so the expenses that we can offset and recover and recoup is from March 3rd of 2021 through December 31st of 2024, so just a little over three years. What we also know about the fund itself, and this was clarified for us on May 10th when they released the additional guidance, is that these funds may be used to respond to the public health emergency or its negative impact on residents and businesses. These funds can also be used to respond to workers performing essential work by providing premium pay. They can also be used to replace lost revenues that were collected in the most recent fiscal year, and in their guidance, they do give a very specific formula that we have to utilize when calculating that revenue loss. And then finally, it does call out specifically making necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Again, on May 10th, just last Monday, they did release some, the Treasury, they did release some additional guidance for us, specifically two pieces of guidance. One is the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund FACS, then the final interim rule. From those things, we learned first and foremost that these funds do avail themselves to providing you, the council, with an enormous amount of flexibility to help disproportionately impacted populations and communities. It does allow for cash assistance to residents, but that cash assistance must be reasonably proportional to their COVID impact. And again, that's something that we have to evaluate relative to what we're trying to administer from a cash assistance standpoint. These funds, we know, cannot be used to offset tax cuts. So if we were intentionally reducing a tax, we cannot then replenish those taxes with these funds. So that would not constitute the revenue replacement provision. We also know that these funds cannot be used to be deposited into a pension fund to offset our ongoing pension deficits. And the plan that we're proposing here to you today, it takes into account all of this guidance, but it also addresses some of the concerns and questions that we had at the April 27th meeting. Specifically, one example, mental health. There was considerable amount of conversation regarding whether or not we, as a city, could get into mental health or help offset mental health providers' cost of providing services to that community that's been impacted by COVID. This guidance is very specific in that it does allow us that opportunity. And I think you have the opportunity to shape what that looks like. So as the city manager mentioned, we are going to focus in on just the first year's allocation today, but I think, as he mentioned, it's important to kind of paint the whole picture that we're proposing. So again, as we look across the entire spectrum of what we're talking about over the next two years and getting $396 million in total, for community investment, the amount of funds that we're actually expecting or proposing that we invest in the community is about $276 million. So we're proposing an allocation one, and I'll walk you through that here in a little bit, $118 million in allocation one, and another $158 in allocation two, for a total of $276 million. On the city operation side, $100 million over the two allocations, with the first being $70 million in allocation one, and then $30 million in allocation two. And then, again, just being flexible and agile is something that I think that we definitely learned during the CRF money and that process, being able to be flexible and to respond to new needs as they should arise. We're recommending and proposing $10 million out of each allocation be set aside in a contingency for a total of $20 million. So when you look at this, again, totaling $198 each allocation for $396, but when you specifically look at the amount of the awards, as the city manager mentioned, the community investment portion of this award would be 70% of our overall total, with city operations being roughly 25%. And the contingency, which I imagine would also be geared towards our community investments, would be an additional 5%. So what I want to focus on today is, again, based on, I believe it was Councilmember Garcia who made the first note about making sure that we focus on year one and not look at year two, because we really don't know what our next year is going to look like. We're going to be focusing on $198 million year one allocation, where we're proposing $118 million for community investment, $70 million for city operations, and a $10 million investment in a contingency or set aside for future needs. When we break this down, the first allocation that we're recommending is for Phoenix Arts, Business, and Employee Assistance of $36 million. Our mitigation and care of vulnerable populations, we're recommending $30.5 million. Our household and residential assistance programs, we're recommending $24 million. Youth sports, recreation, education, and after-school, $15.5 million. Our Phoenix resilient food system, $9 million. Better health and community operations, $3 million. And then that totals our $118 million. One thing I do want to emphasize as we move forward in this portion of the presentation, you'll notice that when I start talking about some of these programs, you'll notice that there's an asterisk next to them. That asterisk represents what we're recommending, that we invest in a homeless prevention strategy, and that totals about $40 million of this overall program is allocated to help with homelessness operations. So our first program is our Tuition Assistance and Wraparound Support Program. That is a program that is customized, a customized training program to promote training and growth in high-demand jobs, especially those industries that have been impacted by COVID. This would expand our partnership with the Maricopa Corporate Community College, with a corporate college. We also have a workforce training facility and training program that would be run out of Chris Mackey's office, and this is a program where we would leverage the ARPA funds along with those from IDA, PCDIC, as well as ACF, to purchase and rehab the old Kmart building and turn that into a facility to train workers and employees, working with ASU and Wesmech, as well as MCC. Also, under this program, we've got a micro and small business program of about $8 million. This program really builds off of the Coronavirus Relief Fund program that Chris Mackey and her group ran, along with ACF. This program would fund awards between $3,000, $5,000, and $10,000 based on the number of employees that an individual entity has. We also would like to focus on some of the light rail-affected businesses that are impacted as a result of the development of the Light Rail Project in the northwest and south-central areas. And those awards could be up to 50%, worth about 50% more of the regulars and standard business awards. Also, working with arts and culture, I know many of you sat in on some of our budget hearings and you heard about the significant input from our arts community and what that does to our overall economy. So we've got a multifaceted arts program that we're also proposing in this program. First and foremost would be our nonprofit arts and culture stabilization grants program, which totals $2.75 million. That would provide funding to manage operations and personnel until our arts organizations and institutions got back on their feet. It would provide essentially two years' worth of operating, or working operating, capital. Our small business workforce program, that is working with small businesses that have less than 100 people, and this, again, this is under CED, this isn't specifically an arts program. This is not an arts program, this is more of a small business program. This would be to train and hire new employees and just get them acclimated and as well as training new and existing workforce to deal with the new demands post-COVID. And then we also have our Creative Industries Recovery Fund of $1.25 million. This would be a program under the arts, and it would fund recovery grants to venues, as well as galleries and other creative entities that focus on presentation arts. Next is our Artist-to-Work Program. That is a program where we would contract with city artists to develop temporary art projects and performances, to, again, get them back to work, given the fact that they've lost a lot of gigs over the last, you know, 14, 15 months. Then we've got our Arts Career Advancement Grants. These would be grants to provide resources to those that are in the industry to help them grow their skills within the industry, so it would provide opportunities for workshops and other training. And again, all of these programs that I'm talking about will be brought back to you by the experts, the folks that are actually going to deploy these funds. I'm really just giving you a 30,000-foot level understanding of what some of these proposals are. We do expect to have a third-part discussion on many of these programs. Then $750,000 for our Arts and Culture Internship Program. This would be focusing on those that are either undergraduate students or those that are in, within that industry or seek, or have a passion for art, working to give them internships to get them experience and exposure to the arts industry. And then $250,000 to provide personnel and technical assistance to ensure that these programs get off to a good running. Next, we move over to mitigation and care for vulnerable populations, where we're allocating, again, $30.5 million. The first allocation is a $10.5 million allocation for homelessness and mental health. And this one is, again, it's almost like a blank slate. This is something that the council could really help direct and decide on how we allocate these funds. Again, this would also be an opportunity for the council to put in place regional funding opportunities to address mental and homelessness, mental health and homelessness issues. Next up, we have HVAC upgrades. Again, we have a lot of city facilities, specifically our community centers, that serve a dual function, that also serve as senior centers. And so when we open those centers back up and get folks back in, we want to make sure that the air filtration is sound and of good nature, that we actually can bring people back in safely and not have to worry about COVID. And so that's what that would be for. And then next is our Edison Impact Hub. This would be taking an old dilapidated building that used to be a hospital and turning it into a building for community services. And this facility would be able to use for the community to give them, you know, medical and possibly even mental health, working out of that facility with some nonprofit providers. Next, $4.5 million for U.S. Vets and Veterans Relief. As you know, last year, we bought a hotel specifically for our U.S. Vets Organization. They are in need of additional operating capital to support that facility, but also additional needs that our veterans in general may need. These funds could provide that additional assistance that they need if they're facing homelessness. Summer heat respite, Vice Mayor Garcia mentioned this in his opening remarks to today's meeting. We would use these funds to provide a permanent solution for our summer heat respite center or facility, which we ran last year out of the convention center, which is not going to be available this year, because we're hoping, knock on wood, that that facility is open to conventions again here in the next couple of months. And then next, $1.5 million to replace the existing case management system that is currently used by our Human Services Department. That case management system, as you know, is, it's time to be replaced, and we could bring it up to the, you know, a little bit further along from a technological standpoint to have online applications and some other types of tracking and creative ideas that we could operate out of that program. And so this would be an opportunity to start working towards replacing that case management system. Next, we've got $15 million for utility rent and mortgage assistance. And again, this may look like a small dollar amount to you, and the reason it is a little bit on the lower end, specifically because we are also currently deploying ERA I, which was a $51 million program that we're working internally with Human Services and externally with Wildfire. But then also, we were just awarded last week, or two weeks ago, another $40 million in ERA II. We also know that the state is also deploying half, which is focused specifically on those that have mortgages. Now, at this point in time, we don't know whether or not the state's going to pass any of that money on to the cities and towns. We have heard anecdotally that they expect to operate that program exclusively on their own. We also know that we also have some emergency housing vouchers that we can use within the housing arena. So again, the small dollar amount here is recognizing the fact, to the city manager's point, that we don't want to be duplicative, and we want to make sure that we spread money as far as possible. So again, $15 million, we think is a good starting point, and if we have to invest more, we have time and opportunity to do that. Next up, Housing and Financial Assistance Fund. This fund, again, it's in its infancy in terms of what we think we can do here, but we know that after listening to you, as well as listening to the folks that have called in for the last couple of months, that households are struggling. Families have been impacted, they're struggling to find ways to, you know, have nourishment for their kids. They're finding it difficult to provide for their families from a childcare perspective. So these funds could be used to do that. So these could be cash assistance that we provide to our residents to give them an opportunity to help sustain and provide a subsidy to offset those costs that a household that may have been impacted by COVID is impacted by and facing as a result of their COVID impairment. So again, we have time to craft this in terms of, we would take council direction in terms of what our audience is, what our population of folks that we're looking to help, and how much we want to allocate on an annual basis. The only thing I would say here is, again, just remember back to one of the earlier slides, grossly proportionate or, you know, responsibly proportionable to what they've lost. Then $1 million for bus card subsidy. We've heard a lot of calls and conversations about providing free transportation. We could use COVID dollars to help buy bus cards for those that have faced issues with job loss but need transportation to and from work, or to get their kids to and from school. We could also use this to provide a subsidy for those that don't need full, free transportation assistance. Next up is a broadband project under the Youth, Sports, Recreation, and Education and After-School Program. $15.5 million overall being allocated to this category. Within this program, the first item that we're talking about is the broadband project. That is a project that Councilwoman Pastor has been extremely passionate about. She's been working with Chris Mackey and folks at Phoenix Union, Maricopa Community College District, and GPEC, as well as other partners, to build a very robust broadband, free broadband network that our underserved neighborhoods can use. Last year, they were allocated a little under $2.5 million. From what I understand, it's a $25 million project. We're proposing that we allocate a little bit, around $5 million out of this allocation to start moving that even further. And then in the next allocation, we would seed additional funding to move this project further. Next up, Wi-Fi connectivity for community centers. We started this last year with some of our public facilities, making sure that the Wi-Fi is available to our residents that come in, and our customers, as well as those that just need a more robust platform to provide that internet access. Also, our public housing facilities. You know, we could look and use these funds to leverage free internet access and Wi-Fi access to our public housing residents and the facilities that we own. Then we go to Burton Bar, their startup at Burton Bar. This would be a program that would be run explicitly by our library staff, and it would fund essentially a broad range of services that would expand our hive at Central. And it would be, we would purchase a curriculum that would be used in both English and Spanish to make sure that we serve all facets of our community. Next, we heard a couple of our residents speak earlier on about the budget and about the importance of College Depot and the assistance that that provides for future and prospective college students. We would like to expand that program with $1 million. That would buy additional curriculum. It would also provide additional technology so that we could make sure that our youth that are pursuing college opportunities have the resources that they need to do that in a successful manner. Then, Library Bookmobile for underserved areas. We have land in areas where we would like to actually build libraries, and possibly in a next-bond program, we have opportunities to build those libraries. But in the interim, we would like to use some of the ARPA funding to purchase mobile solutions where we could take our bookmobiles out to serve those communities where libraries don't currently exist. And again, bookmobiles have been very useful in the past, and we would be basically leveraging that with these funds. Our Phoenix Works at Burton Bar in Ocatilla would be a $600,000 allocation to buy laptops, hotspots, as well as provide CED job services at Burton Bar and Ocatilla Library. After-school programming, we heard several of you mention that in the budget discussion as well. So what this would do is it would fund after-school programs at city facilities, specifically eight community centers from three to six. So again, giving parents an opportunity to work and not have to worry about what to do with their children while they maintain employment. Also, Youth Sports League grants, a $500,000 allocation here. The thought here is that we could use these as subsidies to leverage those parents that are struggling to find the resources that they need to get their kids engaged in competitive recreational sports. I know as a parent myself that has a child in competitive sports, those registration fees and training fees can add up, and if you don't have the resources, this would be an opportunity for us to help there. Also, early literacy tutoring support. This would be another program run out of the library in partnership with ASU. We would focus on children from first grade to fourth grade, and it would actually focus and partner on the ASU's America Reads Tutoring Program. And then finally, another $3 million worth of capital and technology, as well as staff support in the library to perpetuate a lot of these programs that we've talked about here today, as well as build on the things that we did last year under the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Fund. Next, we move to our Phoenix Resilient Food System. This, again, is very much leveraging what we did last year with the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We had a very successful CRF program that was run by our Office of Environmental Programs, and we're leveraging that and building on it. I believe the first portion of this is the Economic Development Innovation Program, where we're allocating $3.4 million. This would basically seed our Feed Phoenix program, which last year, we actually were able to provide 80,000 meals through our CRF funding. This would also fund agricultural grants that would actually work on finding additional sustainable food incubator programs. The Equity and Inclusion Program, we're allocating $2.4 million. And under this program, what we'd be focusing on is funding for community and grassroots organizations that focus on urban agriculture or fellowships, as well as other food action plan initiatives that the council has directed staff to work towards. Our Local Food Consumption Production Program would be a $1.5 million investment, where we'd focus on backyard food production, specifically grant funding for 100 residents located in food deserts for backyard and community gardens. So another innovative program. Next, our Food Banks and Food Pantry Support, $1.3 million. Last year, we worked a lot with St. Mary's and St. Vincent de Paul, but this year, we heard from several of our council members about those smaller mom-and-pops or those community-based food pantries and food banks. So this $1.3 million would go towards getting those entities resources that they need to serve their populations and their constituency base. And then, $200,000 for our Resilient Food System Program. What that would be is grant funding to provide farms for advancing technology and methods to grow food in our changing climate. And then finally, $200,000 to support the staff and outreach measures to make these investments successful. Then, under community, or Better Testing and Community Outcomes for Testing and Vaccines, $3 million. We've spent about $5.5 million worth of Coronavirus Relief Funds on testing. Based on the last set of numbers that I've been watching over the last couple of weeks, it seems like folks are starting to get fatigue with testing. And if there's an opportunity for the city to leverage our mobile vans into testing opportunities and testing solutions, we could use this $3 million to do that. I know several of you have also had ideas about using this money or some of this money to incentivize our community to be vaccinated. It could also be used in that fashion as well. Next, we move on to City Operations. Specifically, $70 million allocated here in this first allocation. Again, we talked about $100 million in total across the two for a 25% investment in city operations. Our first would be on infrastructure, technology, and capital needs, where we're recommending about $40 million. Then, we recommend $25 million for revenue replacement, and specifically here, we're focusing mostly on the convention center, as well as our Workers' Compensation Fund, and I'll talk to you specifically about those two things in just a moment. Then also, $3 million for Oversight, Compliance, and Outreach. Again, as the city manager mentioned, OIG, the Office of Inspector General, will come in. They will evaluate our compliance with the ARPA funds, its guidelines, its regulations. So making sure that we have the staff that we need to ensure that, but also making sure that we have staff to ensure that we have a robust outreach program. One of the things that we learned in the last go-round was that, again, we lacked some of the navigation skills that we needed or opportunities for folks to help our residents get access to the funds that we had that we were trying to deploy. And so, that's what these funds are about. Also, $2 million for PPE Cleaning and Sanitizing. Again, we do have some of these funds already budgeted in the current year, budgeted, but it's very small dollars. So again, depending on what happens over the next couple of months with COVID, and hopefully we do see it wane rather than increase and spike, we would use these funds to address those needs for community, as well as ensuring that our employees are safe. So that totals our $70 million. Now, I want to take a few moments and just walk you through some very specific things that touch on a couple of these key areas. So first and foremost, the 27th Avenue Recycling Facility. This is a $20 million project that is in the Solid Waste Proforma. It is in their CIP. This project was deferred in the current fiscal year. It was deferred to next fiscal year. What we're recommending and why this project is really important is because as a result of COVID, we've got a pretty significant increase in the amount of tonnage, our residential tonnage, that's coming in as a result of COVID, as a result of people just simply being at home. The other thing that this project would do is, right now, we're not operating the 27th Avenue Facility. We're using North Gateway exclusively. And so, we're actually running that facility a little more than we normally would. And so, we're actually, the useful life of that facility is being shortened by the fact that we're overusing it. And so, this would allow us to, again, allow that facility to actually, you know, run its normal course without running it into the ground early, essentially. What these funds would allow us to do is also reduce future rate pressure on the solid waste rate. Again, this, the project itself, it is in the proforma. There is no disputing that. But by using ARPA funds to do this, it allows us to use the funds that are in the solid waste proforma and that were bond-funded specifically for 27th Avenue. We could use those funds to address other capital needs that the solid waste entity has, and by doing that, we reduce future rate pressure. And again, simply just frees up additional resources for other projects, like I mentioned. So as far as revenue replacement is concerned, the first and foremost thing that comes to mind is the convention center. So based on the way the Treasury is saying that we have to calculate our revenue loss based on the most complete last year of fiscal year revenues, would be last fiscal year, we've lost $31 million in revenue, based on the Treasury's calculation. The reality is, when we look at our numbers, that number is much larger than that. And again, the convention center has about $266 million in outstanding debt, and total debt service payments to pay and service that debt is in excess of $40 million annually. Now, we as a city, we're only responsible for about half of that debt. One thing to keep in mind, that is, if the convention center continues to experience declines in revenues, the general fund is ultimately, our excise taxes are ultimately the backstop to the general fund. So anything that we can do here, it actually helps preserve and sustain the general fund without having to make cuts in the general fund at a future date to sustain the convention center. This also protects the convention center from having to make additional and future cuts. What they've cut to this point really just is to deal with the revenues that they've lost up until the point that we made the decision to make the cuts. They still continue to lose revenue relative to what their projections were, and this fund would help, these funds would help us with that. Again, from a rating agency perspective, this action would be viewed as credit positive, and so our rating agencies would think this is a favorable action for the council to take. Workers' Comp, this is another area that we think revenue replacement makes a lot of sense. As a result of COVID, we've got at least $2.4 million in COVID-related claims that are going to hit our Workers' Compensation Fund. When those claims hit our Workers' Compensation Fund, they have a long-term effect on what we as a city have to fund our Workers' Comp trust at. So from an actuarial standpoint, by putting and offsetting these costs, that would reduce pressure on the general fund, as well as all of our other funds where our employees are based that pay into the Workers' Compensation Trust. This also would be viewed favorably by our rating agencies as credit positive. And then finally, our contingency of $10 million. Again, this just really provides you with flexibility and the ability to address unexpected issues that we may see over the next couple of months and even to the next couple of years as we roll out these COVID dollars. This is just a sound financial practice. It's not a requirement. So you, as the council, can decide today that you want to program these either today or at any other point in the fiscal year. This is just, again, a recommendation. It does not have to happen. So as we summarize, again, Phoenix Arts and Business Employee Assistance Program, we're recommending our allocations here of, if you can see, of, let me get my papers back. $36 million for that, $30 million for mitigation and care of vulnerable populations, $24 million for household and residential assistance programs, $15.5 for youth, sports, recreation, education, and after-school, $9 million for our resilient food system, $3 million for community and better health outcomes, which is our testing, and our city operations of $70 million, our contingency of 10, and that is our $198 million allocation. And that concludes our presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or take any feedback you have on our proposed plan.
Thank you so much. We'll go to Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Jeff and the rest of the staff for their well-thought-out process. I did have a chance to go take a tour of 27th Avenue Recycling, and it is in, I was with a bunch of engineers. I learned more about recycling than I ever thought I would know. But I will tell you, one thing I did learn is that there is a dire need to get that center up and running. And so, I think, and that's because of the pandemic, so I think that's a wise decision. And I also want to thank Jeff and others for looking at the local food banks. I know that Councilwoman Waring and I got a chance to tour a small food bank off of 32nd Street. It was pretty impressive, but they do need help. I'm hoping tonight, we can have a little dialogue, but that we can come back maybe during the week. Is it two weeks you're coming back, Jeff?
Councilwoman Stark, Mayor Members of the Council, I believe the plan is to come back early June, so June eighth or so.
Okay.
Yep.
So that will give us a little time to have some dialogue with Jeff and Ed about some other ideas. But I think it's really, looks great. I really appreciate all the work you've done on it. And I tell you what, after, again, touring the facility, we need to get that up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage council members who have ideas about things that should be in here. I think the more notice we can give our staff, the better. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I think this is, just want to thank staff like Jeff, finally you, and Ed, and everyone else has done a lot of great work on this and being creative, and I think this is all really great. But one of the things that I did see, and I don't know if the question is for you or for Ed, but when we were presented with the allocation recommendation for the ARPA plan a few weeks ago, the money we set aside for community investment equaled 71% of the entire proposal. And now, we have seen in the updated proposal, we're only putting in about 59% for community. So my question is, like, what happened? And why is it, why is it that we made that 11% shift?
Bring it back up. Councilwoman Guardado, that's the next question. I'm trying to pull up the, I'm going to go back if I can. Can you go back to that exact slide, Ariel? It's like, there you go. Slide, yep, that one. So Councilwoman Guardado, Mayor Members of the Council, if you look at this slide, you'll see that what our plan is still to allocate 70% of the funds to community. So our first allocation would be $118 million of the first allocation of 198, and then next year, in year two of our allocation, we do another $158 million, getting you essentially $276 million for community. That represents 70% of the total allocation of $396 million. Theoretically, again, from my perspective, knowing the council and knowing what our community wants, I think that additional contingency of $5 million would also, or $20 million would also end up going to community. So that would actually end up boosting the community to 75% and the city operations to 25%. One of the things that we had to address in building this revised view, and again, I want to thank the people behind me because they're the experts that put a lot of this together. I'm just kind of the front man, if you will. We planned to bring them back in June, where they can give you a much more deep dive and dialogue on the specific programs. But we did take a $20 million haircut off of what we thought we were going to be getting from the feds. We initially were told it would be about $416 million, and on Monday, the 10th, we realized that that $416 had turned into $396 million. And so, all of that reflects some of the adjustments that are made here, but the intent is still to give the community at least 70, if not 75% of the total funds that we receive.
Well, that would be great. The closer that we can get to 75 to community, and the sooner that we can do that, the better, I think, would be great for our community, given that we're still, you know, in a crisis. I mean, we're, you know, hopefully we'll see the light at the end of the tunnel once we get more people vaccinated. But I think that, you know, we have new issues that are arising because of this pandemic. And I think the purpose of the federal funds, as the Department of the Treasury stated, is to support immediate pandemic response, to bring back jobs, to lay out the groundwork for a strong and equitable recovery. With that direction in mind, I hope to see revision to this proposal that includes that focus. And I know that we're doing a lot, and I know that we're being incredibly innovative in terms of how we're doing things, but the more that we can do that in this first round, I think it would be better. I know that, you know, the mayor and I have one big thing in common. We both have three-year-olds and four-year-olds, and we've seen the huge struggle, right, with the little ones being behind the screen or not having other kids to be able to play with. And, you know, and I'm excited, you know, to work with her on how is it, you know, that we're gonna, you know, put more money into our pre-K programs, into our PAC programs. You know, we're thinking of innovative ways to help workers at the airport and doing, like, great things there. So I'm excited about what we're gonna be working on that together. But I, one of the things that I think I did mention this to you before, was that, you know, I like the programming at the community centers, but I do think PAC is essential for a lot of our, for a lot of our families. I think, you know, families, you know, like our teenagers that can walk from school and can go to a community center, you know, to play basketball or what have you, I think the programming there is good for them. But I do think that we have to expand the PAC program into more schools and giving more of these slots in the schools, because I know that, I know, like, for me, like, it's a huge relief if I don't have to worry about picking up the kids till, you know, I'm ready to pick them up around four or five. And I know a lot of families are in that same position. So the more that we can figure out scholarships for the PAC program, for Head Start, where we can have the kids be in just one place and having parents picking them up from that same place, I think could be helpful. I know that Cartwright only has, I think, only has two or three schools, and if we can think about those school districts that definitely need them, I would want us to do that as we're looking at the money. And I know there's an allocation for that, but I would want to make sure that we focus a little bit more on that. And again, you know, thanks to the mayor for all of your work on this, too. And the other, the other thing that I think we also talked about is the money for arts. I think that, you know, we have to be, you know, it's interesting, I cannot imagine, what is it that we can do with $8 million for arts? And I think we talked about this, you know, how can we grow, you know, like, the folclorico, like, in our city, like, how do we teach, you know, like, kids, you know, to play in a mariachi band, you know, like, how do we do these different things, you know, for our kids in our different communities, community centers, I think would be a good thing. And how do we really invest in the West Side? I know that we have some artists out in the West Side that did apply for funding and they didn't get it, and hopefully this time around, we'll be able to help them out. But, you know, if we can be more innovative on that and we can figure out different ways on how do we allocate that money, I think would be a great thing as well. And then, my last thought is, much research has focused on the impact of COVID, and I'm going to continue to say this over and over again. COVID-19 crisis has had a huge impact on women in the workplace. Since the pandemic began, women have lost 1 million more jobs than men, and Black, Latino, and Asian women have seen higher unemployment rates than Caucasian women. We need to allocate ARPA funds to support women who are out of work, with a special focus on those that are hard-hit in the hospitality industry, the food service industries, and even our domestic workers. I cannot, I can imagine how many folks are not getting people to come in and clean their homes because of this pandemic. So I think the more that we can support people, so that they can go back to work, is going to be incredibly important. So thank you for that. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for all the hard work.
Thank you. And I should have probably started with the patient souls who have, from the public who have waited, but we do have four members of the public to address the council, so I will go to our staff, too. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Penny Ali-Taylor. Penny, are you on the line?
Penny, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Oh, great. Mayor, Members of the City Council, my name is Penny Ali-Taylor, and I'm the Chief Public Policy Officer with Valley United Way. Thank you for the opportunity to share our- Thank you for the opportunity to share our perspective on the ARPA Fund Distribution Plan. In making ARPA allocations, it's crucial to value capital and infrastructure investments both inside the city and through partners in our community, especially as these are well-suited for the one-time funding opportunities. These investments are vital as they will help the city and our community derive benefits from these federal funds for decades to come as capital investment is utilized again and again. The investments inside the city are important to ensure the city has the ability to continue to deliver services in new places or new ways that aren't currently available or to replace aging infrastructure that has reached or soon will reach its useful life. It is important to note, in many occasions, these investments will have to be made at some point. And these investments with ARPA funds will also help relieve pressure on the city's general fund for rate charges for services such as water and trash and valuable enterprise departments. The investments made with partners in the community, such as the U.S. Vets Hotel at the I-17 in Cactus, assist our partners in their important work in our community and ensure that they have the capital required to continue their work for decades. We can all acknowledge that from the outcomes of the pandemic, there is a need to provide direct assistance to individual businesses and organizations throughout our community to help them through this extremely difficult time. But we must balance those needs with the importance of ensuring, ensuring that the city and our partners receive the capital and infrastructure investments required, not just to ensure that they are capable of providing vital services today, but for decades to come. The combination of strong ongoing services funded with local dollars that go into buildings and infrastructure paid or with one-time-only funds is an opportunity for a sustained impact that helps our community in the long term. Thank you for the opportunity to share our perspective with you today.
Our next speaker is Linda Brady. Linda, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to provide comments about the possible uses of ARPA funds. There's a lot of great programs in the plan. And one item of interest is the portion that staff has identified to support infrastructure, technology, and capital needs, including a conversion to electric vehicles. SRP has a sustainability goal of enabling 500,000 electric, electric vehicles in our service territory by 2035. And we know that we can't achieve that milestone alone. So we developed and implemented several programs and initiatives designed to support our city partners in meeting their EV goals and climate-related goals. So we hope to offer the city some of these programs. Also, SRP is very appreciative of the 15 million possible allocation for utility and rent mortgage assistance. The challenges of the past year have caused financial hardships for many utility customers, both at SRP and the city. And we are strong supporters of your efforts to provide resources and assistance to the customers in need and want to continue working with all of you on these efforts. So we're pleased to support the ARPA proposed strategic plan update. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Erin Rippen-Kroger. Erin, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, please proceed.
There you go, Vice Mayor, City Council members, city manager, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Erin Rippen-Kroger, and I'm the Executive Director for the International Rescue Committee in Arizona, resident of Phoenix. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Phoenix Welcome Center that's located in City Council District Eight in a former elementary school of the Phoenix Elementary School District. The Phoenix Welcome, Welcome Center is a community-based collaborative effort that hosts families and individuals who have been released by ICE and/or Customs and Border Protection into the Phoenix area, primarily as they transit to other parts of the United States. This is a dramatically vulnerable population with almost nothing but the clothes on their back when they arrive. The Welcome Center provides safety, medical checks, a place to stay, a warm meal, showers, hygiene supplies, communication access, child-friendly play spaces, and in recent months, in collaboration with Maricopa County, COVID tests for all new arrivals. The center was opened in July 2019 with private funding and community donations and has operated 24/7 ever since, including throughout the COVID pandemic. Operates in close collaboration with groups such as the International Rescue Committee, South Wellness, Medical Care, St. Vincent de Paul, Save the Children, Refugee Aid, LDS Charities, Monta Vista Baptist Church, and many, many others. Since opening, we've hosted over 10,000 people, over 6,000 since February 2021, over 300 people just this past weekend, who otherwise would have been dropped off on the streets of Phoenix. We all remember the situation in 2018, 2019, with families being dropped off at random hours on the streets around the Greyhound station. The Welcome Center has helped to address this completely on private funds and is only, is one of the only centers along the southern border of the United States that operates without any local public funding from the city, county, or state. Investing in the center during these exceptional times to absorb some of the COVID impact costs seems like a highly appropriate use of the city's available ARPA funds. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Craig Trippken. Craig, are you on the line? Craig, are you on the line?
And I think Craig did mention ARPA in his comments on Agenda Item One, so. My sense is he would like to invest in us fighting homelessness. Councilwomen, or, I think that concludes our public comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Ansari, followed by Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to also thank Jeff and all of the staff for all of the work that's gone into this. It's really exciting to see how it shifted and gotten so much more detailed this time around. I just have a couple of comments, one question on a variety of issues. Firstly, with the micro and small business assistance, I just really wanted to thank you all for taking on the feedback of making sure that businesses along the Light Rail expansion receive a bit more funding. So it's good to see that's 50% higher. Our team did get to go down to the South Central Extension Line with Mario Peniagua, got his name right this time, and Marcus Coleman, and the entire team with Valley Metro. And we actually heard, we went to a couple of small businesses and heard a lot of really positive feedback about the programs that you all did last year, including Feed Phoenix. So they're all really looking forward to more of these, more of this support and just reiterated over and over how helpful the city was. So obviously, great work, and I'm glad that we can continue to support them further. On the bus card subsidy program, I guess here I have a question. Obviously, in the discussion around the budget, you know, that I'm very much supportive of free public transportation, and I think we've heard a significant amount of calls from the community around that. So I'm just wondering, the 1 million, how long you think that'll last us approximately? Is that a couple of months? Is that a year? Is that not even close to any of that? I just want to get a sense of where that will get us.
Councilwoman Ansari, Mayor, members of the council, that, that's actually a very good question. We actually have not really set down to put pen to pad. And a lot of that is really going to be dependent on how you would like to craft the program. So a lot of what we've presented to you today are really the framework of programs. The details behind those programs has yet to be created, and that, that's where we need your information, your input. So again, it really depends on what you want to do in terms of, do you want to do full subsidy? Do you want to try and buy bus cards for folks, you know, on an intermittent basis? Or do you want to identify a population of people that need ongoing monthly support for bus program? So again, that's your feedback, that's your direction. And again, this is not an etched-in-stone program. This is a very flexible and fluid program. The intent is to get your feedback to make this suit your needs as well as the needs of the community.
Okay, great, no, that's really good to know. And I will take the mayor's advice and give you written ideas. I've done a lot of, we've done a lot of research on how, where that could get us and just the benefits in terms of ridership, so we'll make sure to get that to you. On the topic of transit, I know that ARPA also allows for investments in green infrastructure, such as green streets. That's another very specific initiative, but I know there are some proposals that have come forward, not only in my district but throughout the city, to incorporate the stormwater management approach. So I'll send that to you in writing as well. But just another piece that I think is not currently in our proposal for ARPA that I think would be good. When it comes to better health outcomes and community testing, I know there's the 2 million or several million allocated there. I just want to reemphasize how much I think door-to-door efforts are important when it comes to those zip codes that don't have a lot of people vaccinated. We did it in like a very tiny sense of just knocking doors for a couple of days. And I know District Five and others have been doing this as well. And I think it makes a really big difference. So if we were to be able to make significant investment, and by that, it could really be just a couple hundred thousand dollars of the, the few million, I think we can really make a dent in that. So we can send that to you as well. I'm really happy that the gentleman from the IRC called in. I had the opportunity to go tour the Welcome Center last week. And I think that that's one piece that was originally in there, or some sort of support for refugees was in there. And I think support for our refugee community and nonprofits that support them is critical, especially as we're going to start to see asylum seekers and refugee numbers increase with the new administration. And I know that the number that they're asking for, I believe, is only about $250,000. So if we could put that in there, I would strongly advocate for that. And then finally, on the issue of tuition assistance, really excited to see that in there as well. I think we have an opportunity to assist students who might be in a gray area or a limbo when it comes to financial assistance for higher education. Last time I talked about this program in Mesa with two years of free resident tuition. And I think with our strong network of community colleges in Phoenix, we could do the same. My only ask is that we maybe focus more on direct cash assistance to students and not just the technical assistance, but happy to work with you more on that as well. But thank you so much. I'll make sure that we send this all to you and looking forward to flushing it out further. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going back to, I think Councilwoman Guardado talked about the, what the Treasury released. And, and they said, the relief money is meant to build a strong equitable econ, economic recovery. And it all, it goes on to say, and it's defined as addressing the systematic public health and economic challenges that may have contributed to more severe impacts of, of the pandemic among low-income communities and people of color. I, I think this breakdown is getting us closer. And I know, Jeff, you stated, we're still at the 30,000-foot level. But as we start getting down to, to the level of deciding the number, the funds and what programs are going to get what, I think it's important for us to, to kind of focus on that intention from the federal government. The current breakdown, I don't feel, is a fair distribution of resources from community. I don't think it does put people first in, in the ways that some of us stated last time, and I want to reiterate today. To me, I know there's, there's, there's some funds that are, are kind of intertwined, but it looks more like 40% of it is, is intended to be invested in, in the city operations and infrastructure. For example, where we have youth sports and recreation, there's a big allocation for H-back or, or fixing some of our libraries. I agree that that might be a need, but I don't think we can consider that direct contribution to community. It's still, to me, looks like infrastructure. I think these, they're asked. I'm, I'm glad the rental call center is not on here anymore. But I think with the convention center and the recycling facility, we're being asked to replace revenue. I, I think these are allowed uses with the goal of keeping our budget intact and, and, and looking forward to it. But it does seem a little bit more, like I think I said it last time, it's more of our, our issue or the city's issue. And I, and I would want to see other options of ways that we can get funding for that that don't mean literally taking from those that were most impacted by COVID. So I would want us to, to look at some alternatives. Maybe some of these funds are freeing up funds in other places, or there's other opportunities we have coming up, shifts that are happening where we might get more revenue to look, to look to make that happen. I think this, this moment doesn't call for business as usual. It actually calls for us to try to find bold ideas, to try to figure out direct relief to those that were most impacted by this pandemic, and to reduce the red tape. I think one of the things we learned from last time is we, I think at times made it a little bit harder on community than we needed to. So how do we actually, you know, figure out this strong equitable economic recovery and what it means to us without, you know, kind of limiting ourselves? I do think direct cash to residents that were hit the hardest by the pandemic is, is in, without conditions of how to spend it, is something we need to look at. People know how to meet their, their needs best. We should trust them. The federal government did it three times last year, and I think that was successful. And so we need, we should look into what it looks like for our residents at the city level. The rent assistance, utility assistance, all that was great last time. I do think we need to figure out other ways of, of being more flexible. Last time, we kind of went the route of, of getting landlords their money first. We should use this relief on, on, on flexible housing assistance and figuring out how to get the money to the tenants themselves and helping them with bills and obviously other things that we didn't think about last time. Childcare costs, car repairs, medical debt, pharmaceutical needs, all these sorts of things that, that folks might have. Mentioned by Councilwoman Ansari by LRC, I don't see refugees anywhere near here. I know last time we, we did some work there. I do think the Welcome Center, and because it's one of the communities that has or had a last time around, one of the harder times in, in accessing the funds, I actually think for specific communities like that, we should look to provide advocates within our system that make sure that we're equitably distributing these funds and making sure that those most impacted get these funds. On the shelter and housing side, I really do think we, we need to look at that and specifically focus on 30 to 50% AMI. Maybe purchasing some hotels similar to what happened with U.S. Vets, but looking at other locations or other places where we could have long-term affordable housing and, and maybe putting or looking into how our Affordable Housing Trust Fund can receive funds or can kind of manage funds moving forward. The earliest we can see from what happened last year, wherever folks are at with the new shelter development, new shelter beds are probably not going to come for the next couple of years. So I think it's figuring out how we do housing-first approach and other creative ways to get affordable housing to the people of Phoenix. I also want to say there's some amazing stories out there. I'm wrapping up, sorry, I'm long-winded, I know we've had a long day. There are a lot of groups out there who are already meeting the needs of those that were disproportionately impacted, and I want to name some of those. And I think we should give to those folks or, or folks like them or organizations like them. There's folks doing healing circles, there's folks doing basic needs, supporting each other with food boxes and so on. There are nonprofits creating safe space, free community programs for low-income youth. There's Rock Boxing Gym in South Phoenix, Phoenix to Grow, even the Girl Scouts, a bunch of these organizations that are already doing great work that I think we can support. Black Family and Child Services is already implementing new behavioral health programming and taking it to where people are at, not necessarily having people come to them. I, I think even connecting it to the CAP program, one of the things I think I failed to talk about earlier was that we do need just an overall expansion of, of mental health support and workers across the city. That's one thing that we, we can't, we missed last time in, in failing both the, the mental health issues that were already there, but also the ones created by the pandemic. Folks like the Black Mothers Forum is already thinking of innovative ways to close the education gap, more wraparound services, after-school programs. Obviously, we, we talked earlier about the need for the, the Phoenix after, the PAC program, after-school care. But there's other folks out there doing after-school, summer, weekend school to make sure that, that youth that were impacted by the pandemic aren't left behind. I do see, as mentioned earlier, the nonprofits that do have access are the bigger ones, the traditional ones, the ones that already have access to the city. So I really hope we can. So I really hope we can, um, and, and in, in areas like arts and culture, I think it's easier for those folks to come to us. We need to expand and make sure we're more accessible to other folks. Um, last thing I'll say, and I started the day with it, is, uh, heat relief. Um, it, it's not a new problem. I really love when, when Jeff said we're going to look for a permanent solution, long-term solution. I think that's where we should go. Um, so that, I, I want to applaud and make sure, um, as we're entering the summer and knowing that 520 people lost their lives last year in the valley and that it's only getting hotter, that, that we should look to, to do that. And last thing, similar to Councilwoman Ansari, I think instead of continuing to, to go on longer, we will send, um, some written ideas of the things we, we think we should focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Guardado.
I promise I will, I will make it nice and short. Um, so here on the bu-, on the budget, um, Jeff or Ed, um, we, on the youth sports, recreation, education and after-school, after-school program, under, under the Phoenix, Phoenix Works, um, I, I wanna, I wanna, I think it would be a good idea if we added the Palo, the Palo Verde Library at the community center. I think we have a big, we have a hub on 5470 in, in school. We have the John F. Long Family Resource Center, and then we have, um, the Phoenix Headwork, you know, that are helping people get back on their feet and looking for jobs. And I think it would be, it, it would be really good if at the lo-, library, people were also able to check out workforce laptops in hotspots. I, I think this could also help us give a boost to making sure that people, um, can go back to work. So I would, I would, I would like to be able to add that library to this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll work with staff on that.
And Councilwoman, I just wanted to add, you, you had mentioned the other day the, the issue about examining PAC programs at schools rather than community centers. And so I did ask, um, our Parks Director, um, and the Deputy City Manager to take a look at that specifically. So we'll have more information on that in June as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think going off of Councilwoman Guardado's last comment about laptop checkouts, it was exciting to see the State Department of Education and Superintendent Hoffman is willing to partner with us on library laptop checkouts and, and provided significant financial support. So I think partnerships are important, and I hope as we develop this plan, we will also give priority to where we can work together with other levels of government. As the city manager pointed out, the county has received even more support than we. And, and if we can work with them on important issues regionally, whether it be stormwater infrastructure or fighting homelessness, that seems very valuable to me. I would love to participate regionally with all cities working together on ARPA funds towards fighting homelessness. I think we can do more if we work together countywide. Um, I understand many of the other communities may be interested in joining the work for closing the digital divide. And again, that seems like a very exciting partnership. So the more we can do it together, I think the, the further we will stretch those dollars. Also agree with, uh, Councilwoman Guardado's point about, uh, making it easier for our parents at the airport who work at the airport to go back to work and maybe an investment in childcare facility there. I hope we can invest in our young people and do one-time investments that will continue to pay dividends after this money is spent, whether that be upgrading our Head Start classrooms for our local young people or buying new curriculum so that we can deliver the best possible for those young people and, and continue the benefits. I generally feel like capital and infrastructure investments will pay dividends for a long time. We can reduce costs right now, but continue the benefits to our community. It's important to me that the city be financially healthy. We do amazing work. My first year as a councilwoman, we were in a deficit and we had to cut. And we just heard how much our community values the work that the city does. Unfortunately, we have still not recovered from some of the cuts we made in 2008 with the first recession. And so we have to keep that in mind and, and come out of this as a healthier city. So I hope we will continue to consider the financial stability of the city. And, and we do need to think about state shared revenues may be threatened, although I'm certainly committed to doing my part to protecting what the voters did decades ago. I would, was impressed with the new guidelines and the emphasis on, on connectivity and, and energy efficiency. I agree with Councilwoman Ansari on green streets and was pleased to see that that was in the, the federal program. I would say high, high priority to me is getting people vaccinated. I would very much like to see us take those COVID testing vans and turn them into facilities that, mobile vaccination facilities, so we can go out in the community and make it easy. And, uh, the Assistant City Manager mentioned incentives, and I would, I, that was not my idea, but it sounded like a good one to just help folks have a little bit of fun or get incented in some way to get vaccinated. That is the light at the end of the tunnel for our community, and the more we can get vaccines to the people who need them, the better. We, we have huge parts of our city that have not yet been vaccinated. We are not the lead in that area, but we have trusted resources and can be partners with those who are in the lead and have successfully partnered as some of the events that our council members spoke about at the beginning of this meeting definitely highlighted. I also hope to continue to see investments like the one with U.S. Vets that will pay, pay dividends for many years in our future and, and really are thinking forward and long-term. So thank you, Jeff, for all your hard work on this. Thank you to all the city departments who contributed. Some super cool ideas in there from workforce to the, the great hub in Councilwoman Guardado's district. And I'm excited to invest in helping people upskill or get access to their dream job or get ready for, you know, people who have been impacted by COVID to get ready for some of the cool jobs that are coming into our community and really could change lives for the better with that wraparound program. Additional council member comments? Hearing none. I want to thank everyone for their hard work in a long but important meeting today. We are adjourned.